Please rise in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Boss. President. Pivia.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Hughes.
Present.
Frye.
Present.
Schroller.
Here.
Brom.
Present.
Horns.
Present.
We have a form. All right, the first item is the approval of minutes from the October 22 meeting. Does anyone have an adjustment?
On page four.
Okay.
Under the top, the proposed cell phone tower. CM Graham spoke out in-
Wait, where are you at? On page four of the minutes or page four of the agenda?
Page four of the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Number four at the top, after limited locations within the city. CM Graham spoke out in opposition citing health concerns and encouraged more research be done.
Okay, you want that added?
Yes, please.
All right. You'll get, did you get that city or you'll get it from her?
I'll get it from her.
She cited safety concerns, is that what she said?
Health.
Health concerns? Further research?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve as amended then?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right, the next item is public comments. Anyone who is not on the agenda that would like to come to the podium and share, please give your name, first and last name, your address and your ward, please.
Hello, everyone. Address is 503 L.
Are you unable to go to-
I can't get my chair to go up there.
Okay, do you think?
That's all.
Oh, thanks, Gray.
I'm ready.
Just so everybody can hear you.
Okay. I'm not, I've been real loud.
All right. Thank you very much.
Kelly, I have a line. Address is 503 L. Here at Marysville. About my property here at Marysville, 308 May. Went in, fixed the trailer, put some tin on the shed and repaired it. Dave was supposed to take pictures and bring them to y'all. This is, is this here? My son is going to pay, but we're not supposed, so he has to go pay him. And with one window that didn't get repaired, plus one window on the front of the trailer has a piece of tin on it, but it's located by City Inspector thirty years ago, so I can do that one if I need to. I can get into those storm windows and get over that.
Are you talking about the one that has tin on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the front. That was put on Marysville thirty years ago, right after we first moved into the trailer.
Okay, is Dave here?
Mm-hmm.
Dave, you want to come and give us some thoughts here? Just overall, your opinion of the improvements she's made, does it bring it to code? Is it?
You guys wanted to put, repair the windows as they are, or put plexiglass or glass back in them, and just put storm windows over them in any direction that they had to fit. The garage's tin is about halfway, not quite halfway.
He's got the rest, but it snowed, meaning he couldn't get down there when it was snowing. But he has the rest of this week, because it's been nice, so the rest of this week he should be able to finish it up.
The last time he said get stuff out of the shed and we tear it down, but-
That's how we left it, right?
Yeah, so.
And you haven't-
What do you want to do with it?
You haven't taken anything out that-
No, but I did have someone come in to check the building, and they said it was in, in a firm condition. It's just, it's going to be needing a new roof, but other than that, it was solid.
Did you look inside the shed?
I myself, no. My son and the guy that was down there did.
So, council, the, right now, as it was laid out, is that we had went on to have a demo, is how we left it through the end of October. So, how do you guys feel if this is satisfactory? Do you want to just continue on with the demolition?
Are the vehicles still there? I didn't make it down.
Yes, oh yeah. I'm going to tarp there if I can't get, my brother was supposed to come in. I was depending on my brother to tow the one. He sold the trailer that tows, so I can't get it towed. So, I'm going to tarp it until I can figure out another way to get it out of there.
Well, I did see on the list, though, that Butch included it with a citation or whatever.
Yeah, we did get another letter in the mail about the cars, yes.
So, I think that gives you a date as when they have to be removed.
I think it is this month.
So, tarping is not-
As Kansas state laws is, if it's private property, it can be tarped.
Dave, you have a response to that? Is it, are they currently tagged in an operable condition?
No. There is something in our ordinance that says I'm not putting tarp on it. Have I said any?
I don't remember anything about a tarp. I would say no, and as long as our rules are more stringent than the state, we can make our ordinance say whatever we want. And ours say if they are not tagged and operable, that they can't be there.
I don't put you in there to mention.
But I would have to, I'd have to go look at the ordinance exactly, but I do not remember anything about a tarp.
I think, I think maybe if ours does, it's something about you repairing it or-
If it, yeah, if you, okay, we have a thing for thirty days, you can come in and buy a permit from us that says you're going to repair it within thirty days, then you can tarp it. But that's the only way.
I guess we'll turn that.
Yes, that is, yes. You can get a thirty day permit to repair it, but it cannot stay there just tarped.
So, you need to make that, Dave, that's, yes, you agree with what Cindy just said?
Yeah, I don't, I think that's probably about-
Okay, so that's, in regards to that letter that you, the new letter?
Okay.
That's, that's what you have to, within, yeah. Okay, so going, going back with the property for the building in the shed.
To me, it does not look like this is really, would be up to standard yet.
I'm a little concerned the shed's not done, but on the other hand, I guess I look at it as substantial progress. I mean, it may not win a beauty contest, but-
But there's been progress made.
Yeah.
Are you going to continue to work on it, or is it just going to stay like this until-
No, no, no. He's got the tin there, he just didn't get it, and then neither you need to get painted, but you can't leave it looking. But he's going to paint it.
Well, right now, the way it stands, unless you guys make a motion opposite that, is that it is to be demoed. That's the way, the status of it right now.
What do you expect, to have the tin finished, et cetera?
Hopefully by this next weekend, with the weather being nice. It's saying on, on, Doug Yoby W says the weather this week's supposed to be the rest of the week, it's been up for forties, fifties, sixties even. So, he should be able to get down there and get it painted.
We meet again on the 26th, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. What's the roof look like?
On the shed?
Yeah.
Now, the roof on the shed, it's got a leak, I can't believe it doesn't leak.
It doesn't leak, but it does need to get-
A lot of this picture here is not damaged, it's leaves, those are leaves.
That's what I wondered.
It looked like it was the shingles peeling, but-
No, that's, that's leaves that are on top of it.
Okay.
Dave, what is it going to mean on the roof? What do you think about the windows on the trailer? These pictures don't look too great.
I think they were just patched up.
Well, I mean, I think we've, we make a good faith effort to work with those who make good faith efforts, and, I mean, I see progress being made. I'm not, I mean, we've been over backwards for people to our own detriment at times, but I think it wouldn't be a bad idea in this situation to kick it down the road for two weeks, put a hold on things, and see what, what we come to then. I mean, you only draw so many lines in the sand, but I think this would be a reasonable line since obviously things are moving forward.
Dave, as far as, you know, we've put all these timelines out, can we just do nothing for two weeks and still be at the same place we are tonight? Or do we have to start the process all over again?
I would think you would just pull it off your demo, your bids and stuff, and do it, if you're open to back on, kind of while you have to start over.
I'd probably just delay the demos.
Just delay going out for bids?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all we'd be doing.
And then, I guess, okay, I'll make a motion that we delay going out for bids on the 308 May property until Tuesday, 27th of November, so that way we have another council meeting between now and then for us to review it.
Got you.
And we can decide at that time.
Is that the next council?
Yeah.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
As far as discussion, do you want to give her specifics you want done? I mean, we kind of gave her specifics before.
Well, I know the tin needs to be finished, I would say.
You mean the tin on the shed painted?
Painted.
Painted, yes, correct.
What about the windows?
The tin on that window needs to come off.
It can become, it's hooked in there good.
It looks like it's caulked to the side of the trailer.
I believe the ruling last time, or at least previously, was that, though, I guess I understood it as actual windows going in rather than storm windows being fastened to the outside. I think that's what the council-
It said window, it said glass or plexiglass.
Right.
Storm windows, plexiglass or glass? I, I mean, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
I'm no, I'm no construction professional, but this does not, I mean, it doesn't look like it's made to last, and-
Well, it's my brother bearing nature.
My opinion on it, I don't want to be mean, and I don't like being a jerk about things, but, I mean, the structure needs, the structures need to be gone. I mean, it, I mean, the tin is some stuff that looks like it probably should have got hauled to smithies. I mean, it's, it's just kind of, it's just stuck on the top of plywood that was already warped and rotten. The roof shot, I mean, at best, this tin's going to get screwed on top of a rotten roof. I mean, the windows are, are some storm windows that just got screwed over sideways and aren't going to stop wat, they're going to trap water and snow behind there. I mean, we-
My son took and put flex seal around the windows.
But it's not, I mean, the thing, I mean, we're trying to get rid of some of these structures that need to be gone, and I've, I'm guilty of it myself, I've had two that I've, two that I've had to tear down. But, I mean, if we start allowing all this stuff to just get ramshut, we're not gaining anything. I mean, we're not, we're not solving the problem, we're just kicking it out the road, because this is not, I mean, if it, if it got, you know, plywood taken off and done right, and it was actually sided, and it looked like a newer structure, but, I mean, I drove by there, and it looks better, honestly, in the picture than it does from the alley. And the people that live there are not going to be, I mean, they're not going to be happy with that, it's-
Well, you know, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
I know, and I, like I say, but I'm just worried that if we keep going down this road and little, it's, it's not, it's not going to be a long-term solution, and it's not going to look proper when it gets done.
Right, I mean, the fear is that this is a temporary kind of a patch, in that it, we come back in five years, and because it's not, because the storm windows haven't really kept it out, or it's rotten, or they've broken, or whatever, but, I mean-
But if we start doing this with these properties, we might as well not even be going through the process, because-
Well, okay, I guess philosophically, though, are we doing this to improve the look of a neighborhood, or are we doing it to improve health and safety? Because it can be the same.
It's both.
It should be both.
Well, I, I agree to an extent.
And would you want this next to your house?
I, you know, I, I wouldn't, but again, I don't, you know, the way to control your neighborhood is to buy your neighborhood, as they say. If you don't own it, it's somebody's property.
I've done that.
That's what you do. But, I mean, it's, it's her property, as long as it's not causing a hazard, as long as it's not a safety thing, and it's not exceedingly derelict, and that's in the eye of the beholder, I think we have to thread the needle. I mean, at some point, property rights do come into play. I get it, we live in a community, we have community standards, where we draw that line varies. But if there's a good faith effort and it's not a hazard to the neighbors, you know, everybody comes out at their front door to look at something different, and some people hate the view, I get it, but I think there's a good faith effort, I don't think, you know, if we get this completed, it's not a health and safety hazard, I think we need to let some things right.
But there's building codes that have to be followed and-
I know.
Adhere to.
It can't be inhabited, that's-
Well, why don't we vote, see if we, they vote to defer, and if they vote to defer, what needs to be done? How about that? Fair enough.
Could I ask a question? Delay, uh, what are your long-term intentions for this property? Are, are you going to just-
Well, this spring, I'm, my son and I have discussed this. This spring, he wants to go in and clear out the trailer, because we want to get rid of the property, because we're tired of-
He wants to what, please?
Clean out the trailer and get rid of the property, because we're, we're, we're tired of dealing with all the bullshit that goes on with it. You know, it's just like, constant, something, something is constant with something bitchin' about down there constantly. And the neighbors, their properties ain't any better than the ones that are bitchin'.
I was just going to say, and to go along with Councilman Frye, what he said about giving you a little bit of time, because if I fixed the, your trailer down there and I had to look to the west, I'd have a fit about it, because it's not as bad as your trailer is. It's worse than your trailer is.
The trailer needs some work, yeah, I know this, but, you know, I've, I've replaced windows down there, and replaced windows down there, and they keep breaking them out.
Okay.
cheapest way to do it this time, where I, on social security, won't have the money to go, I didn't realize plexiglass had went up so high, and it was like a hundred and some dollars a sheet now.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and bid, and then take a, a vote, and then after that, we'll decide what she needs to do if it-
I was under the assumption you guys just wanted the hole was closed up for nothing to get in, for nobody to get in, that's why I did the storm windows. I, I did this, yes.
I, I think they wanted it, their, the motion was kind of, was kind of recommended, was they wanted, we wanted it brought up to where it looked like a functional, livable trailer structure again. Because I kind of remember it, wasn't that kind of how we talked?
But I don't think that the storm windows on, it's the way they are, is not looking livable.
Well-
Okay, let's take a vote.
The rest of the house is financed first.
Okay, so, all in favor of delaying the bids till November 27th and to readdress it on the 26th, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, man.
Vision of the house?
Three, five. Okay.
Raise your-
Four, four.
Okay, let's do it again, raise your hand. Aye, or in favor, one, two, three, four, and against, one, two, three.
Oh, no.
Although I do agree that significant improvement's been made, the specifics we gave you, you didn't adhere to, and are, we've made efforts to improve our community, and this is, some of these decisions are hard, but I think we need to go ahead and bid it out.
Well, if it's going to be made to be torn down, I have someone that will come in and do it for me at a reasonable price.
Okay, so I would, I would vote not no, so my vote would be no. So, I would just encourage you to get your stuff out. Do you have a comment?
If she happens to want, if she happens to clear it out herself, it would be to benefit of us.
Right.
And she has to. Yeah. You, yeah. Have that right. You, you have that right to tear it down, I, I think. Yeah. Not to speak out, but, if, yeah, if you, if you want to tear it down.
Did we, do, the sub bids that we're asking for, is that, what's our deadlines on those?
December 5th is to turn in the bid, and then January 30, 25th. 25th was to have them demolished by then.
Okay, it probably would be in your best interest if you have somebody that will tear it down for you and take it down, because number one, you'll get to go through your stuff, and second, our costs will probably be greater than your costs, so, and then we would put that cost on the tax rolls, so I would encourage you to do that.
Or you want her to just get somebody to do it, or you want them to bid on it?
We'll, we'll continue with our bids, but she has all, all the right to, I, I want to make sure we don't fall out.
Yeah, because, yeah.
I, we'll, we'll approve the bids tonight, as long as you're okay-
To be published.
To be published and all that, and then December 5th they'll be due, so she'll, I mean, she'll have-
What if somewhere in that process she does have it torn down, or is that in the bid? Okay.
We would call it off.
I just want to make sure we didn't maximize double face, some hours, out some fee.
Well, we have to, we would have to, they bring us the bids, and we would have to accept the bid, right? So, you have that whole process to go yet.
Yes, we would have to accept the bid. I would check to make sure, because we're, we would return the property back to grade it and seed it and all that stuff, so all you would, you would have to do all the, the stuff that we were going to do to, to make it, the property, bring the property up just enough, I guess. So, I, I can show you the, give you the bids, so you know what they were going to do, so you can do it yourself.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thanks, Dave, for being here. Is there anyone else that would like to share? Dave, will you help her if she needs help, please? Is there anyone else that wants to participate in public comments? Thank you, Dave. Thank you. All right, Michelle. First, thanks, congratulations for your PIAC award.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I saw that, so.
It's always very exciting. We've brought home awards four years in a row, so I think for a community our size, that's something to be really proud of.
Very exciting, so, congratulations.
Thank you. Michelle Weitzel, Marysville Main Street, Marysville Convention and Tourism Director. I'm here in two regards tonight. If you don't mind, I'll bring up Christmas first, because I think that'll be quick and easy, hopefully, if you all don't mind. In continuation of what we do many years, Marysville Main Street, Marysville Chamber of Commerce, and Marysville Convention and Tourism, put on the Marysville Christmas activities. This year, it is being moved to the full weekend after the Thanksgiving weekend, if that makes sense, December 1st. We just thought we would try it out that way. There seems to be a lot of sports conflicts, people busy with holidays and Thanksgiving, and we wanted to kind of separate that from Small Business Saturday. As a side note, if you have not already heard about our Small Business Saturday plans, I would urge you to maybe read in The Advocate, or check out on Facebook, because we have a lot of exciting things planned to support our small businesses on the 24th of November, which again was formerly our Christmas activities. But on December 1st, we would like to continue with tradition and have Santa's Christmas parade. It will parade up Broadway, opposite of, of like the, what the Black Squirrels did. It starts at Fourth Street and it goes up the street, and Santa ends at his house. In the years past, Santa has a preference of using or riding in a fire truck, and I have mentioned to Dave that he, he has those same wishes this year, if you all are okay with that. We have encouraged businesses and organizations and groups to put entries into the parade, and in years past, we have allowed them to use golf carts and ATVs, so I would hope that you would let them do that for this parade as well. Our theme, by the way, is there's no place like home for the holidays. Other activities include, like I said, Santa at his house, the Kestner House has their live nativity, and we have children's activities, breakfast with Santa at Lincoln Center that's more, that morning, hot cocoa at the LeViam Center for fine art and photos with Santa, as well as some other, maybe things at the library and museums that we're still working out everyone's schedule. So, the, the street closures there are the exact same as last year, except for I realized that in that very second to last paragraph, that should say Saturday, December 1st. You can tell I copied it from last time around. So, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You guys have any questions? So, I would entertain a motion to accept the requests that's made by Michelle.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You don't?
We would certainly encourage anyone, whether it's a city thing or individually, we would certainly encourage your participation in the parade.
Well, I asked Dave, and he said we could have our fire truck again. So, I still have our signs from last year.
Good weather will be on the-
That says Merry Christmas. So, I, and Dave said, so as Dave says, we can have a fire truck, is anyone willing to participate? Yes? Bobby, Darlene?
I don't know.
Gina?
Depends on if I have kids downtown with me, so we'll see, possibly.
Okay, they could write on the, too.
We could get you at the beginning, so then they could experience for us.
Yeah.
Terry?
I don't, hopefully.
Hopefully? Todd?
Think I'm out of town right now.
I should be here.
Hopefully.
Okay, we got a lot of hopefuls, so we're going to plan on it.
Hey, two people still agreed entry in the parade, guys.
That's right, that's, I'll bring that, I'll bring the antlers from a couple of years ago, just in case you want to be festive, so.
Yes.
Thank you for including us.
Yes, thank you for participating. I will tell you that Main Street awards the best business slash group with a prize. Last year, it was homemade breakfast delivered to your place of business, so maybe we could bring some things for our council, maybe you could hear it.
There you go, there you go.
Okay, and secondly, I'm here to talk about the first impressions program. Just as a background, for those of you, it's been kind of a long process. It was a prior council, and there's a lot of different faces that approved our participation in this event, or this program, through case study research and extension. Basically, we are like secret shoppers in a community, and someone is like a secret shopper in our community, and they let us know what their first impressions simply are of our, of our town. So, we had our community meeting on the, what was it, the 29th of October. I know several of you were in attendance, but I thought I would, would you like me to just go over some highlights?
Yeah, just, obviously, we read them all, hopefully we all read them, so if you just want to highlight, I, I guess, when I read all this, I guess, I would, you know, emphasize what their big plus points, their big minus points, and what you think we can realistically incorporate.
Sure, sure, and I will tell you, Marysville Main Street was just one part of this program, with the kind of founding person to get us started, among other groups, and we have not met yet since this came, so I, I speak hoping that they all, you know, they all haven't had a chance to sit down with me yet as well. In terms of just kind of the highlights, overall, we had great comments on the historical feel of our community, great customer service, over and over again, it was people were friendly, people offered suggestions, and that's such a positive thing to hear when they were in and out of our stores and our businesses and things like that. Several groups, or several visitors to our community talked about the confusion, which is interesting, between Highway 36 and Main Street. One of the comments is, where is Main Street? Another one of the comments was two Main Streets, two downtowns, so I think that that's something interesting. I don't know if you all have comments on that, but something maybe we have taken for granted for so long that people can certainly find our Main Street easily, because it's one block off versus maybe like Seneca, who's, you know, six or seven blocks off a highway, but maybe, you know, some signage or something in place to say downtown district or things like that. I thought that was a very interesting thing. Overwhelmingly, and I think we're all aware of this, is the pointing out of the, we have empty storefronts on our Main Street. It was, it was something that was commented by several people, and I think we're, we're all aware of that, and I'm hopeful that, you know, between Partnership for Growth and Marysville Main Street, and the chamber, and the city and the county, that we are, are- Marysville Main Street and the Chamber and the city and the county, that we are, are working toward that, but that was overwhelmingly apparent through theirs. They did comment that a lot of our industry areas are not an eyesore, everything seems to be cleaned up and, and well taken care of. Overwhelmingly, positive thoughts about our healthcare providers, not just our hospital, our hospital had great comments, but the variety of healthcare facilities, dentists, chiropractors, things like that, so that was positive. Great feedback on our schools and our libraries, and these are all things, obviously, that, that I don't necessarily think of as a visitor, like when I go to a community, I'm not necessarily kind of their hospital and their schools, but it's just great that we've been recognized for those things, and the same with churches, a lot of variety, and they commented on that. A couple of the other comments related just to Marysville in general, that said it was a, it's a pretty town, but it needs focus, and I thought that was very interesting. I mean, you can interpret that how you will, we don't have context related to that. One of the comments was about the visitor center, that maybe it's not well marked, or we need a kiosk that has 24-hour availability. They said we were able to find information, you know, at the library or at the park, you know, we have little brochure racks, but what happens when someone comes in on a Sunday afternoon and everything is closed? And if you all have read the notes that I have sent, we are currently working on an audio tour, which we are all very excited about, and I'm hoping that we will address this very thing, that we will have some information available through that, at places out, you know, all over town that people can access, if they are here after hours or on weekends. Happy to live in, but probably won't visit. I thought that was an interesting comment that, that Galfer, Case State Research and Extension said, well, that's really positive, but on the flip side, I kind of saw it as negative, that maybe we haven't communicated the great attractions and things that we have here in Marysville. Overwhelmingly, again, with the comment on focus, it was that we just need really better signage. Maybe they couldn't find the Pony Express Barn, they didn't know the Kestner House was a museum, things like that. I, I think we've talked about that. I, I should speak for our signage committee, Wayne included, that we're gonna work to expedite our efforts, because I think that that was a big thing that, that we knew going into this, but this has really resonated with us, that we need better signage to communicate, because if they say that they're disappointed to not find more, we just haven't told them what it was, because we, we all know we have a lot here to offer, at least I truly believe that. So those were kind of some big points from it. Again, you know, great comments on a lot of the entities, but I, I agree with that focus comment, that maybe, you know, we need to, you know, be more organized in terms of signage and communication and things like that, so, I don't know if you all have any comments or questions related to that?
Well, I was a little disappointed about that they couldn't find anybody either at the Chamber office or at your office, and then I've often said, I think we should have, you know, maybe notes on the door. And then I thought Kestner House and Chamber were going to, you know, each cover each other on lunch hours.
Right, I can't comment specifically on that in terms of the Kestner House, but I do know that both Jenna and I leave notes on our doors, we're gone for noon hours and meetings and stuff like that. Specifically, the 21st, I can't look back at June 21st and know where I was, but I, I certainly, and I have my cell phone number on the door, too, but, I mean, that goes back to that 24-hour kiosk of having some sort of visitor center. I will tell you that the Galfer Research, Case State Research and Extension said, the comments we get will obviously be directly related to what they see in their own town. Linsburg has a 24-hour visitor center kiosk. You go in, it is just a small building, kind of like our Santa House, has beautiful brochure racks, it has great lighting, it's either air conditioning or heated, and there's signs up for all of their big events, so they have seen that in their own community, and they feel that we lack that here, and I 100% agree with that. But I think that that's kind of where that's coming from, is they see that.
All the, those brochures in, say, the wagon wheel, but I know that you can't put yours there.
We do have ours in there now, actually, Darlene.
Oh, they do?
Yep, absolutely.
You can put it in.
Yep, we just started last year.
Good.
Yep.
And it was good that the library was open and they got information there.
Yep, yep. So, and that's something that we've talked about based on when we did go to Linsburg, each one of their stores had the brochure for Linsburg at their store, and it's something that actually I would be bringing up with Convention and Tourism, not to throw Sandy under the bus, but I ran that by her, if she thought it would be okay at the Garden of Eden, to have a Marshall County and a Marysville brochure just right there. And I, I think, I would hope our retailers would be open with it, but I can't speak for them, but that's certainly something we think about, to just have tourism purchase a couple of little, you know, brochure racks and have them more available, so, excuse me, so if the, the visitor center or something is closed, but they've walked into the Empty Cup, they can find it there.
You know, it's kind of interesting when they say, do we have two Main Streets, because we have had retailers move to Highway 36, and so it almost does create a double Main Street that we never necessarily had.
And there were comments about the non-attractiveness, quite frankly, of Highway 36, and, you know, you have dumpsters and, you know, grease barrels and, and things like that, that maybe aren't as nicely kept, so.
And I know at one time I was on Main Street on the Design Committee, too, and they talked about having Kemp's put little fence things around our gates or something, but that's hard, because then they have to try to open them up, but it's snowy and stuff, you know, to try to, you know, try to make it handy so that they can get to them and stuff, so it is, it makes it hard to make both sides of the street.
Right.
Well, I noticed when I was in Florida, in Tamara.
Sorry.
They had electrical boxes painted, and I thought that was interesting, because it made it, it was, they were beautiful, and I was thinking, now, we could incorporate something like that on the backside of those buildings, and actually, if we could somehow bring, you know, painting to create unity back there and do something with the trash cans to make them pretty.
Right.
I mean, they took electrical boxes and made them beautiful, so maybe we just need to work on how to fix the backside, to pull it together and make uniformity or something.
Yeah, and those are certainly things that I would absolutely bring up to, to Main Street, because that would fall within the Design Committee, so.
Well, I think it's great, and you know, the whole thing about needing focus, I mean, that was kind of my takeaway from the league conferences, you know, we need to have a long-term strategy and kind of, it seems like we're addressing our immediate needs, but we don't as far as, and, and, you know, even to go back to our city, you know, our logo doesn't really, I know, this is a big area of controversy, but our logo.
That was before me.
Yeah, but the logo, you know, again, it doesn't really identify us, Marysville, Kansas, and maybe, you know, we need to figure out what we want to be known for in the next 10 or 20 years.
Right.
So, appreciate you guys doing this.
Yeah.
You guys have any questions for Michelle?
I, I will say that, like I said, at Marysville Main Street, we'll continue to talk about this at our next meeting, and I, I would take suggestions on maybe your best way to try to disseminate this to more people. I think that what's important is there's, there's little pieces, you know, that maybe this doesn't fall under Main Street. One of the comments was hospital, the hospital signage wasn't prominent, and so certainly Ashley Cropp was there and can, can take that back to the hospital, but I think there are little pieces. I'm gonna link this on Marysville Main Street's website, it's available on Case State Research and Extension's website, but if there are certainly things that you want to make sure we are farming out, for lack of a better word, I, I would be open to hearing those things, but Main Street's gonna go through the report pretty good and, and try to come up with some.
I think it's great.
I had a question. So were you on the group that went to Linsburg?
Yes.
So, I guess, since we don't, we don't see their report, so what did you see there that you thought, besides the kiosk, obviously, was there anything there you were like, oh, that's something we need to take back to Marysville?
They, I speak very specifically about their downtown, just because that's really where, I mean, it's so much related to my job. We have done a great thing, I think, by putting the trees. Their downtown was very warm and inviting in terms of the maybe benches and potted plants and trees. I can comment that we were there on such a hot day and we stood underneath a tree and it felt 20 degrees cooler. I thought it was very interesting. One of the comments said something about our, our restaurants were hard to, maybe the signage wasn't recognizable. The Empty Cup does a great job with that sandwich board. All of their restaurants either had a sandwich board, or they had like their menus outside so that people could see them, very kind of European-y, I felt. Like, little things, like bulls for the water, for their dogs, people walking through town, things like that, like their downtown just felt very inviting. There was not a lot of vacant buildings in their town. Wayne, I, I hope I won't speak out of turn, talked to someone at, at a facility that did say they had a lot of turnover in terms of their retailers, but they do have a lot of retail down there, and they have some of that more like need-based retailers, like clothing and things like that, that maybe we might be lacking somewhat.
Well, you said that, they said that they, you found out that they turned their real tailor, tailors, well, how did they get retailers to come back in?
I don't, we didn't see that through our.
The comment, the comment they had was, they have a really nice event once a year, every year, and about the, the people showing up for this event go, oh, this is a really nice downtown. I want to have a shop here.
And, you know, and it's a little bit, I mean, they are more of a bedroom community. I, I would say they're, they're like a daily outmigration town as opposed to inmigration. I think, I know people who live there and work in Salina, or McPherson, or Newton, or places.
And they have a college.
And they have a college.
They have a college.
Yeah, that helps.
Let's be honest, we, this, the one comment says focus, what do you think of when you think of Linsburg? You think of that Swedish heritage, and they have embraced that, and there's no doubt that that is their focus. I mean, even the fire station had that doll of horse somewhere on it, you know what I mean, in there? But one of the things, going back to ours, is their signage was great. We found the parks, we found the downtown. When you go into their, you know, like from that kind of main road off the highway, you see this huge archway and then kind of like our downtown with all the poles, and they all had beautiful banners. I mean, it was just like, we're going somewhere really exciting. I mean, that anticipation was a big thing, so.
How big is, is Linsburg our size?
I'm sorry?
Is Linsburg our better size?
A little bit bigger.
A little bit bigger.
A little bit bigger. But, you know, I mean, when you think about, I mean, our, I would put our healthcare facilities, I go back and forth, because those, again, aren't things, I think of it as a visitor thing, but it really is the holistic view of your community, but I mean, our healthcare facilities were great. Their library, I mean, I don't mean to be any harsh, but quite frankly, it was not impressive at all, and I put our library up with the best in the state. So I think we had a lot of great things on them. They didn't have any big hotels, so I would, as the tourism person, wonder where they maybe get some of their bed tax funding, if they're, they have two tourism professionals certainly maybe funding from the, from the city to compensate for that, because they just had small motels. I wonder where they house all those, those people when they have these big festivals, that they have like eight bed and breakfasts. So it just, you know, they're just a different community than us, but I think it was a really good learning experience, and I hope that it was as, you know, positive for them as it was for us.
I was kind of surprised when they said the Pony Express was a disappointment, because a lot of people that go through our museum thinks it's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the individualized tours, so I'm kind of surprised by that.
And we don't know the context, if they just walked in and said, I don't want to pay the admission. I mean, we didn't pay an admission to go into any of their museums. We mainly were like, can we find it? Does it look attractive and makes me want to go inside? So we don't know that context. In fact, one of these, the, the people that came on the 21st said there was like no flowers or anything, and then the very next comment, the other person came one month later and was like, there's color everywhere, there's flowers everywhere. So again, we don't, we don't know if they, when they came, we don't know if they popped their head in somewhere or engaged with someone, we just don't know these things. I mean, we spent, Austin, five hours in Linsburg. They, we don't know if they spent five or two, we, we just don't know. But again, it's still, their viewpoint is still important if it's first impression, too.
Right, sure.
Well, and their Main Street runs north and south, basically, doesn't it?
It is.
So, kind of like Guamigo, so you can have flowers.
That's fair, it's a good.
Better than you can if you've got east, west.
I think the Pony Express Barn suffers a little by location. I mean, nothing you can do about it.
100%.
But I mean, I've heard people say, well, it seems kind of, kind of tucked away. Well, it's.
Original location.
And they're very focused on signage as well, as tourism's very focused on signage, specifically for them.
They have new signs up.
Yeah, they do have new signs up, and I, not related to signage, but I will tell you that all, all of our museums, I feel like are making strides to improve their stuff, but if you all have not heard about the plans that they have for the Pony Express Barn, like they're making this children's area and they're like moving everything around, I mean, that thing's gonna open next April and you all need to make time to go down there. They have a great group working down there, great group.
Well, that's good to hear.
Yeah, all three of our museums are doing great, so.
Well, thank you for taking that time and speaking with us, and just let us know what Main Street and Convention and Extension does with any of that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Ellen Barber.
Hi, I'm Ellen Barber, I'm the Executive Director of Marshall County Partnership for Growth. I just want to piggyback a little bit on what Michelle just said, I was part of that group that went to Linsburg. I've never seen such a clean city, and the amazing thing to me was when you come in, there is the co-op right before you get to their downtown, but their co-op was sparkling, sparkling clean, they had their trail going right through it. So, I mean, I don't, if you see normal co-ops, this was incredible, so it's pretty impressive to me. I just want to introduce a couple of people that are with my organization here tonight. I'll let them introduce themselves and how they serve with us. We'll start with these ladies, who may refer to Frank.
Angie Armstrong, I represent Blue Valley's Health Communications and the Partnership for Growth Board.
David Etta, I represent Tension Corporation, and I currently serve as the Secretary of Partnership for Growth.
And Frank Popejoy, come on up here, if you want to say a few words.
Frank Popejoy, I represent Blue Rapids on the Partnership for Growth, and it's been quite a pleasure, helped set it up years ago, to, to serve on it. And I look at statistics a lot of times, and so, you know, it's shocking to see the decline overall of Marshall County, and I, you know, back in 1935, there was 25,000 people here, but let's go to 2010, there was 10,117 people here, and now today, we're down 372 people from that. So economic development is key here to retain our youth, either through going to trade-type schools or getting them to return, and of course, housing is at the top of the list, but you need the people, and that's what our partnership with all the cities has been, is working with the different cities, developing plans, bringing it to them, running across their councils, letting them run with it. So we kind of are out, I'm real proud of having Ellen Barber on the North Central Regional Planning Commission, she is Vice Chair of that, so we get a broader perspective of what's going on in Kansas through that, and it brings it to our board, so that's really a help. When we look at it, one of the studies done by the governor, Kansas Governor's Council on Economic Development, oh, about four years ago, showed that Marysville had a housing need, and they needed about 35 owner-occupied homes, new ones. They needed 125 rental units, and this is based on job and income levels, is how they determine what's affordable. And so when you look back on that, part of that, you know, we've dropped a little bit more actually in our population, and when we look at Marysville, what is it, 3,200 people, something like that?
We claim 3,300.
3,300, okay. And overall, we're 9,745 people in Marshall County. That's, it could go up or down from there, it varies, but when you look at it, you look at, what did we say, 3,000, how many here?
3,300.
3,300, okay.
That's our firm number.
Okay, 3,300. Well, if you look at that, over 6,000 people come here to either work, shop, eat from other parts of Marshall County. So it's important for Partnership to grow, to partner with the Chamber, they want to develop, they want to bring ideas in, and the cities, because we're all one unit here, and a lot of work right here in Marysville. I see them every day, commuting back and forth, so to be part of the, hopefully solving the problems here is what we're after, and the partnership with anybody that wants to do economic development in Marshall County, or look at it and, and bring ideas, that's, that's what we're here for, and we're excited that other people are looking, and to be part of our partnership is what we're looking for, that you guys might come in at some level. All of our people, businesses and everything, we call them investors at different levels, they come in and they can have a seat on the board, and we try to, and we have a lot of businesses, and we try to just spearhead and look at things and see what's happening, where, where the need is, and we've been working on trying to get people back in. And we've been working on trying to get people back in. We could use 300 people right now. One of the drivers on the back when the survey was done for the governor's council was land off. It's mentioned right in the report that that was the driver for needing this housing. And that's been, what, three or four years ago?
This report that you're referencing, I don't think it's been given to the council, has it?
Not that I know of. It's online. I can get some information, I'll give it to Ellen. And it's the, it was a special, it's a PowerPoint. You can look all through it and it has a lot of different cities in there. And it'll tell you what needs they have and the housing levels and what's happening. And I'll try to, maybe I can get, you know, get it forwarded to you.
So it's done by the state of Kansas for the governor's office?
Yeah.
And it was done by?
On economic development.
And it was done by city? Was the governor's office that went driving the study?
Marshall County, I think the only city in there is Marysville. So they took a bigger city in there and looked at it. But I think that's what we're after. We get a lot of statistics, a lot of things, and Ellen gets to see a lot by being part of the, you know, outside looking in and seeing what's going on. And so that's what's offered, I think. And, you know, with the chamber maybe wanting to bring some other studies in and stuff, we can all work together. And that's our main goal here is getting excited about people wanting economic development because we're all in one pot and we need to, you know, spur it up, make it better. And if we can improve housing, Frankfurt's, I think, last, I'm trying to think how many years now, added seven new homes on that in their town, building it. And, you know, you don't see that, it's kind of hidden. I didn't see it. And Ellen's helped put some infrastructure in over there that I hope moves on with some more homes. But if we could just get that each city, because a lot of those people, they come to Marysville. And one of the things you guys have going here that's really exciting and I look forward to are all the events. And it makes it kind of a hub, you know, even the little swap meet you have on Mother's Day, that's exciting. A lot of people come out and grab a dash and, you know, you name it, there are things happening. And quality of life is what people are looking for when they come and they say, okay, I'm going to work here. What about the education, health needs, quality of life type things, things we can do? What do they have? Luckily, we have a movie theater. You know, I don't see taking a backseat to anybody. We just have to get the people in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're just in the middle of our membership drive, so we really appreciate Mayor Grund inviting us to see if you're open to possibly supporting us this year. In front of you, you'll see that we have some ideas that we can offer Marysville. I just want to make clear that our ideas are not in competition with anyone else. We're excited that economic development is considered. Our belief is that the best solutions happen when all of us work together to find the best solutions together. So we'd like to promote all these, all ideas given. We'd like to encourage that our ideas are not exclusive, they shouldn't be chosen over anyone else's. Maybe we can combine them in different ways to work the best. For instance, we have a capital improvement plan idea. That's just simply getting that plan together like Mayor Grund was just talking about, having a five-year plan where we take what our priorities are for economic development, financial, whatever the needs of the city are, and put them together and see how they can all work together so that we have a plan moving forward. And if we were to take, for instance, some of the plans we've not yet implemented from older plans that were economic development and take them with some of the newer plans that say that the chamber's bringing forth, they could, the new ideas could be the fourth and fifth year. And some of the ideas we've not yet implemented that are great ideas, those could be the first years. So there's ways that we can work together and make a capital improvement plan that I think would benefit all of our groups. You'll see that I talked a little bit about a housing assessment tool, a HAT. And I talk about that because it's a great idea. We really do need it for any grants that we're looking at in the future. I did find out that the HAT is one of those documents that anyone can do in the community as long as they're familiar with the Census Bureau. And so I feel like if the chamber or the city were to appoint Marshall County Partnership for Growth and say, why don't you go ahead and prepare this HAT, that we could do that at a low cost to the city so that everybody has what they need on that. The moderate income housing grant, that's something that Frankfurt might need this next year possibly, I'm thinking maybe 2020, it might be better to look at for Marysville. But the Water Tower Place is interested in going forward in Marysville shortly. They've been discussing that with me. The next idea about a Marysville Housing Authority, the Partnership for Children, Pepsi, has, they have a passion that children are in a good, safe environment and good rental housing. And as far as economic development goes, it's important to us to stabilize and preserve the city's low-income rental housing stock so it doesn't fall into disrepair and then you're wondering if it should be demoed. So if we could help prevent renters from slump situations and provide good landlords with good incentives, I think that that's something that could really be an asset for the city. And it's something that Pepsi really wants to work with us on to get going. And I'd like to see it spread to other cities so it encompasses our entire county. And then last of all, I have the idea of Network Kansas. And Network Kansas is something that I think would be really great for Main Street and the chamber and us to all work together on because it's a three-year plan and you have to show how your city achieves certain levels of excellence to get to that certain point. And then you're open to more grants that are available through Network Kansas. So these are just some ideas that we have available. If there's a cost to it, there might be an extra cost of what the time and the effort it would take for us to be involved. But it's also, it makes a match. If you wanted some, you could do some and maybe not others. Or if you wanted to, you could do it all. Or we can combine things with other groups. But it's open for you for questions or discussion.
You mentioned older ideas of economic development. I don't remember anybody bringing any, since I've been on council, specific economic development plan. Was that prior to like eight years ago or?
Well, we have this comprehensive revitalization plan to year 2025. And when I first came into this position, I was surprised how much had not been done.
Well, you're talking about our plan, Unified Land Management Code?
There's a 2025.
You're talking about inside that, as part of the?
It's not inside the, it's a separate plan.
But it's part, it's in the same book as ULDC?
No, it's not the same book. It's a completely different one.
Oh, okay. Okay, so you're referencing that as, I don't think we've even talked about it.
No, the zoning, Planning Commission is supposed to be looking at it.
Is that the one they're supposed to update annually?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I don't think it has been addressed, to answer your question. I don't know anything about this Jeffrey Ryan's Historic Preservation Downtown Revitalization Strategies for Marysville.
We made that a couple of years ago. And that was one of those things I sent out to the council, not the actual document. It was sitting in my, it's still sitting in my office that I told the council at that time, two years ago, when he, that it was available for review. It was his master's project.
Anybody remember that?
I remember it. I didn't look at it, but I remember it being in existence, yes.
These are just some things that I think it would be good to take another look at and say, you know, we have these available, maybe we can take some of the best ideas out of them and see if we can use some of them as well as gain some new ideas in the future.
When you were talking about the moderate income housing grant, you were saying Frankfurt's going to use it so we can't? Is it, I mean?
Well, I've just gotten some more information, but Frankfurt is interested in, you know, we've got the infrastructure going on that project in Frankfurt. But they'd like to renew that grant again this next year and use it on the housing part as well.
Is it through, through what?
It's through HUD and it's through the moderate income housing through Kansas Housing Corporation.
Yeah. That you see, this is more, to me was more zoning, not really economic development. Do you think it's economic?
Well, I mean, it shows a plan for the future of where streets go.
Infrastructure, infrastructure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and the last thing, when you bring up about rental, we tried to have, remember, listen at this council, we tried to have rental guidelines and there was a lot of pushback from the owners.
It was the previous council.
It was the previous council.
It was before you?
I was here.
But we were trying to implement that and we got a lot of pushback from the people who own rentals, that they didn't want us in their business.
From primarily the rent, the landlords who we were not concerned with.
Exactly. That was the most unusual, the unanticipated thing was to have.
So what people, what would they, what didn't they want? Didn't they want to?
They didn't want us in their business. They didn't want us to have view of their property, onsite visits.
They didn't want more bureaucracy telling them, you know, they have to go through in renting, dealing with rentals.
I remember specifically saying, you don't go through people's houses. Why should you go through the rentals? Why should, you know, why, you don't go through the houses that are safe? Why are you going to go through rental properties? Anyway, that's a whole, but it was, I just, we just got pushed back from that and so we ended up not going forward on a rental policy.
And there's some best practices and some ideas that I've looked at that are very positive for landowners that are doing the right thing, that will incentivize them, that don't cost a lot for the city. And so if we took it that direction and then, and then you have on your website, okay, these are the landlords that are, I don't know if you want to call it licensed or approved, look to these people first for good housing. That kind of helps everyone know who's doing right.
Yeah. It's not that I'm against it, it's just we received a lot of pushback from that.
Yeah.
So, anyway, you guys have any thoughts for Ellen or, there's a lot there to digest. I don't know if you want to think about it, if you want to hear the presentation from the chamber first. You do want to hear the chamber presentation?
Well, I think we owe that to Jen to listen to it.
Sure. That's fine with me. And I agree that there's a lot to consider and if you need time, that's fine with me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will tell you how this all came about. So they invited Austin, David Richardson and I to go to a meeting with a potential investor and Partnership for Growth invited us. Afterwards, they ask, they ask us to stay and they asked a question, well, why are you participating in Partnership for Growth? And I told them, nobody's came and shown to me that we have a new council as of January and no one has come forward. So she is, she followed up with that comment to say, okay, I'll come forward. So it was prompted by a comment I made. So thank you for doing that. All right, Jen, you're up then.
Thank you, guys. I'd like to first introduce myself. My name is James Kroger. I'm the president of the Marysville Chamber of Commerce. I'm pleased to be here tonight with our director, Jennifer Duffy, to present to you and you, the council, the packet you should have in front of you. You guys previously received it on your October 22nd meeting. Within it, you'll see a letter of request to the city council as well as a sample documentation of previous studies done by Kansas State University. The chamber over the past four months since Jennifer has been taken into the role of director, has held many, between the gathering informational meetings, trying to find out what our necessary, or I apologize, trying to find out what our members and leaders look as necessary items that they would like to see fulfilled. We, the chamber, in a joint effort with Kansas State University, are proposing to take a step in that direction by closing to you this packet of information. With that, the chamber looks forward to unifying our efforts with all of the council members of Partnership for Growth, Marysville Chamber of Commerce, as well as the city administration to make our community stronger and better for now and for our future. I'd like to turn it over to Jen to go through the packet and she's kind of the one to cook together and even have me tell the message. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've had the pleasure of having several of you in our community input meeting, several of you. I am Jennifer Duffy, I'm your new chamber director. Moved here, made the decision out of anywhere in Kansas to move to Marysville because I loved it. I spent a lot of time up here with several girlfriends of mine and over the last 18 months just kind of felt like this was where my girls and I needed to be. When I came on to the chamber as the director, the board wanted, knew that we needed and we wanted to head in a different direction. We knew that we'd kind of been in somebody else's lane for a while and had missed the mark on providing resources and programs for our community and our business members. And so we began that process by having community input meetings in which several of you attended and were part of and were able to give feedback. We also had business owners, community members, banks were represented, landlords, big corporation heads were represented. And there's a lot of feedback that was given during the conversations with our community members and businesses. Their concerns included housing, trade skills, job recruitment, job placement and retention, infrastructure, taxes and the divide amongst organizations, which included our relationships with you, our relationships with Main Street, tourism and convention and many other community and the lack of communication coming out of the chamber. During that time, I've also made sure to reach out and meet with the mayor on several occasions and Austin because I feel that transparency and communication is critical for our future relationship together. And it's important for me to always have the information back from you guys on the direction that you want to see the community go. And I think that in the past, we have failed to do that. Based off of the feedback from the mayor, council members, residents and business owners, we made the decision to help facilitate the strengthening of our relationships with the city, Main Street, convention and tourism, the arts council, our businesses and citizens and many other community groups. And I feel like we have made huge strides in the last three months in that. I think just the relationship between Main Street, tourism and convention and myself has been seen across the community already. And we are working very closely together and we have a great partnership. And I think that together, we're going to do some pretty amazing things for the community. Based off of the needs, we've developed educational trainings for our businesses for 2019. We began facilitating a conversation with K-State, the director of the urban and community planning department and all of the department heads. We inquired as to what the opportunity might be to bring K-State in for like a comprehensive overall community plan identifying all of the needs that your council members, the mayor and your business and community members requested. And it took a little bit longer than we were hoping, but K-State actually met, the director of urban and community planning, met with every department head within his, that program, which includes everything from landscape, historic preservation, urban infrastructure, economic development. I mean, it was very comprehensive and every single one of the department heads within that urban and community planning department with K-State agreed to step on board and hold some portion of this project. So Marysville was selected as a master community project for K-State for 2019. Although I know that you have had studies completed in the past and I also know that you guys have a right to be skeptical, right? Got just another study. I can assure you that these studies will not be put up on shelf because it goes completely against my nature. Those of you who have worked with me already, who have watched what we've completed in a matter of a couple of months have kind of seen the drive that is coming out of the chamber. And so it's our intent to forge that, those relationships and see through these projects. And we invite everyone to the table. I think probably what is most exciting about this project, if you guys will partner with the chamber on this, is that in addition to your studies and your comprehensive plan and identification of funding sources, you guys are also going to be highlighted. There will be a scholarly paper written and nationally published on Marysville. And that will do, I think it puts us to the forefront. It highlights the story of Marysville, our history, what we value, what we stand for and our future and what we're going to be developing in the future. And so that will be shared nationally, not only amongst other universities and our And so that will be shared nationally, not only amongst other universities and urban planning, but actual urban planners for communities and economic development directors as well. We want to try to work, you know, we talk and we've heard a lot of discussion about the current studies that you guys have. Our communities are ever-changing. Technology is ever-changing. Your downtown has changed in the last four years. I think it's dangerous for us to rely on a study that is projected to last you till 2025 because we should be revisiting those studies every three to five years. And then once we are actively going after these projects in infrastructure, we should go back and probably revisit them earlier than three years. Because, like, you know, we've seen already, your demographic has changed, population has changed, you've had new housing added, infrastructure has changed, the downtown looks different, you now have probably more traffic traveling along 36. All of those things need to be reevaluated for us to, to identify and move forward with a launch plan for this community. And I think it's important that all of you be part of that conversation. Many of you probably were not part of the conversation however many years ago. So, your housing needs, although, you know, the governor's office, you know, completed a housing study four years ago, I can guarantee your housing needs have changed in four years just by your taxes alone. And so we need to be able to look at that with fresh eyes, with updated data, and then make a long-term plan on how we're going to move forward with that. In the proposal that I presented to you guys, I know there's been some confusion, so I just want to walk through it very quickly with you guys. There was an allocation, what we asked for was $50,000. That part of that $50,000 includes the $9,000 that I believe the city and Convention and Tourism had already, I guess, planned or proposed allocating. So, really what we're asking for is an additional $41,000, which will be used as matching funds for, to go towards this $185,000 worth of studies. That does not include my partnership or my approach to Austin and Dave to help with developing your database of open buildings, lands, legal descriptions, infrastructure that's already available to those sites, and then helping the city develop that database. So that when we do start creating and going after economic development, when Michelle and her group start recruiting businesses downtown, that is already readily accessible for us to grab onto. In addition, you know, when we're out there recruiting, a lot of these decisions are based on first impressions. We need to make sure that we are presenting a professional-looking packet that represents Marysville well, and that has failed to be done so far. We are proposing that we will work with Austin and you guys to develop that professional packet and we'll be able to, you know, Partnership for Growth can use it, Main Street can use it, Chamber can use it, the mayor can use it when she is approached at Boss Nationals by a future company, you know, to our community, which did happen, by the way. So, I think that that's also something that's very important for us to do in 2019 as we're also completing our plans, is getting all of our ducks in a row and working diligently with you guys one-on-one, you know, to make sure that we are meeting and going after those projects that you want, that your leadership, you know, wants. So, there has been reference back to the estimated market values being the actual cost. That is not accurate. When I, I like to get my ducks in a row, I'm kind of anal. So, I want you guys to actually understand, if you were to bring in a consulting, a private consulting firm to complete these studies, how much it would cost. So, I asked K-State and their department heads to project, and they have hundreds of years of experience, to tell me if we were to bring in a private consulting firm, how much we would pay. And so these numbers were not numbers that I created, they actually came from the director of urban planning at K-State. Okay? So, these numbers, estimated market value, is the value that would have been charged or placed by a private consulting firm if we were not to partner with K-State. So, included in that, obviously the chamber, we agree with the mayor in the sense that Michelle and I actually just talked about the logo situation. We feel like we should be more unified. There's a lot of confusion about all of the different organizations from the city, where do they go? They get to the chamber, where do they go for tourism? So, we are trying to unify all of our groups and we have, are getting bids currently for a new state-of-the-art website that we would like to partner with the city on, bring you guys, make sure your linkage is there, new resident packets are created, all the information for utilities, obviously information on each of you so that you can be stocked and, you know, phone calls late at night, along with Main Street, calendar of events, pretty much anything, you know, copies of your annual plans, copies of your long-range plan and your work plans for that current year. All of that will be accessible on one website if you so choose to work with us, and I hope that you do. Housing inventory. The housing inventory is actually going to be a multi-phase project. The first phase will be identifying what you guys currently have and the state of that housing. The second phase will be actually identifying what the needs are. We can talk about needing more low-income housing, we can talk about needing senior housing, but we need to identify that for sure and that we need to make sure that the community can afford that and it also aligns with the vision, the long-term vision of what you want. If you envision that you want, you know, I had somebody call me that said they're thinking about putting no-income housing in. If that's the vision that the city wants to address two years from now and it's actually brought to you, we need to go back to our long-range plan and say, "Is this really, does this align with what our long-term value and our long-term goal and vision of the community is?" And that'll give us some, you know, guidance to making that decision and making recommendations to you through our economic development and our housing. The urban design strategies, the urban design strategies are really opportunities, suggestions on how to create that atmosphere, you know, the atmosphere that Marysville wants to have. We've talked a lot about becoming a bedroom community, but what does that look like? How do we make people feel welcome? How do we make people feel they want to come and stay? And how do we design that to encourage foot traffic? How do we bring all of our Rails-to-Trails in through the city to encourage bike traffic into our downtown? How does parking downtown? How does your, you know, any activities, your events, how does that play in the overall look and the warmth of the community? And so your urban design strategies will identify that. You saw a lot of examples in the Clay Center study. I know that one of them reached off very small, but I did send links for online version so that you guys could get online and actually look at the sample study. In addition, you guys will get a resource roadmap. The K-State and I will work together to actually build out and develop a database that gives you step-by-step instructions on which funding sources can provide you, and as we be, you know, work on annual budgets, you're able to look, okay, what's our next priority? What's our work plan based of that comprehensive plan? So, say it's infrastructure or beautification. We know that we need to go after Department of Transportation for beautification of 36. What does the matching dollar look like? So, we'll be able to bring that to council and say, "Okay, in 2022, our goal is to renovate or beautify 36 through downtown, through the downtown area." And then we'll be able to tell you where we want to go after the grant funds, how much grant fund match would be required and help you identify and build that into your budget. And so we'll act as kind of that sounding board for you guys and help you facilitate and be the driving force behind some of these projects. You have a city administrator that is running a city and so chamber is proposing to come in and actually help be that facilitator and drive these projects for you guys on behalf of the city of Marysville. Also, final document with all efforts neatly packaged so Marysville can use it for shifting toward implementation. Since I gave you this, they've also come forward and they are wanting to sit down and meet with Rails-to-Trails and also the depot to find ways that we can also assist them. So, in addition to this, without any increase to that $41,000, our two additional groups and plans that they're willing to work with. And we've met with both of those groups and both of those groups are in support. I will say that Sarah Kissinger wrote an amazing article and we have had phenomenal feedback from that. The community and our groups, local groups are excited about the partnership and I think, you know, there's been a lot of divide this year, not only amongst the council but the community. I think this is a huge opportunity for us to, with your help and the chamber, to continue to forge those strong relationships and actually get people to focus on something positive. When these are completed, we will, K-State and myself will actually come in and we will hold multiple, basically, community meetings where we will show the pictures, we will give you visual aids of what it would actually look like if you chose to proceed with the beautification of 36 or Main Street historic preservation of your downtown buildings. And so you'll actually be able to visualize what is going to come from this and from there then the work plan. We will work with, you know, with you guys directly, you create that work plan. One of the, you know, I know we're talking about the income survey, you know, the mayor met with me and Dave met with me regarding the fire station and their disappointment that they didn't qualify. And in that moment, you know, I shared with the mayor that you guys can challenge that. I don't know how that will turn out, but for years, I know that it's been stated that you guys just didn't qualify. But many communities who are told that they don't qualify, go back and fight it and qualify. And if we don't at least try, we're walking away from millions of dollars in grant funds that are potential. And if we don't get them, one of our sister communities is. So, if we can go after them and bring that money back into our community and enrich our community and the lives of our residents, I think that we have an obligation to at least try to do that. I think I've kind of covered everything. We will be trying to go after grant funds. I know that was the other thing, you know, you haven't mentioned grant funds. That is a double-edged sword, right? Because I can tell you, I'm going to go after $30,000 in grant funds. And then next year, when you're not selected, we're set back another year and we're sitting stagnant. What we're proposing is that we are going to move forward regardless if those grant funds come in, because we want to be progressive. We've been stagnant long enough, we need that drive and direction. And so the chamber, you know, we will continue to go after them, but if we are not selected for those grant funds, we want to be able to say, "We're going to move forward." So, currently, your schedule, which I believe I presented you guys the schedule, that the housing study is actually slated on the calendar to be completed first quarter of 2019, and then through spring, all the way through fall of next year, we will have active community meetings going on, partnerships, obviously, you guys will be involved, we'll invite the community, you know, you'll have your, you know, Main Street and tourism involved in it, your historic preservation groups, you know, the depot, Pony Express, all of those groups will be invited to the table. You know, this is not, we're not a divisive group, you know? I think the drive behind our organization has changed in the last three, four months. We want to forge strong partnerships because our mission at the end of the day should be the same, and that's to make this the best community, providing the best resources and programs for our residents, ensuring that they are healthy, that they have jobs, that their kids are taken care of, we have a great educational system. And so whether or not we get there the same way, at the end of the day, the mission should still be the same. It shouldn't really matter how we get there necessarily, it's just that we do. And so that's what we're proposing. We are hopeful that you guys will work with us on this. I think we can do some amazing things in the next couple of years. You guys have any questions for me?
So, just so I understand, so this is like, it's an all or none. You don't, we don't pick and choose. We're going to agree to be this project, a master project, and so it's not like we say, "Well, we don't really need to do this part of it, but we'll accept..."
I think if you wanted to do that, we potentially could approach them, but I would come back and play devil's advocate and say, "If you want a complete comprehensive plan, you probably want to know how each one plays off the other."
Okay.
And that's just being honest. I mean, if we're going to go back after, say you don't want to do your housing plan. Again, if the most recent plan was done four years ago, then you've got four years where things have drastically changed. Your numbers have dropped, you guys have a tax bond now for the school that has increased pricing, we have more senior, you know, farmers that are selling their land who are now looking for affordable homes in town. So, I think that when we start looking at economic development, the housing is going to come into play with that. So, I think over time, it's very easy for us to fall into, I want to say, the trap of piecemealing items together, right? I think communities fall into that a lot where we see a need and we just respond to it. And then here's another need and we respond to it, without really identifying an overall comprehensive plan and how that, how it looks, the overall look of it. So, yes, I think we could probably approach it that way, but I don't know that you want to, especially if you wanted to move this forward.
So, when I look at these, so my examples you gave me were Oberlin, which was a suburb of Cleveland, about twice the size of Marysville.
Big, yeah.
Right? And then we have Clay Center. Clay Center, have they implemented these?
Yes.
I was trying to figure out what year this was, I couldn't quite see.
It was finished last year and two years ago.
Just recently?
Yes, they have, yes. And I think that, I think that K-State was trying to give you a broad spectrum of the work that they can complete.
Okay.
So that you can kind of see what they fully are capable of doing. Clay Center being the most local and most recent. And yes, if you were to contact their economic development director over there, she would tell you that they are, they have taken this plan, they have met together, they have developed a long-range plan off of it and then a year-to-year work plan, and they are every year going after and completing those projects.
And then the one in St. Joe, which, you know, that was connecting the river to the downtown, which is, I wish we had a, something like that.
No, but you guys, listen, I'm going to tell you one of my most favorite things. There's lots of my favorite things, but I had actually a family in from Tennessee last week. And I think when you, when you've been here for so long, sometimes it's hard to see all that special stuff, that, you know, gleam in your eyes still. And an outsider, because I'm technically an outsider coming in, you have amazing, amazing things to offer, but one of my favorite things are your trails, right? Alcoa Springs, and those, there's an opportunity for us, you know, I know that the Rails-to-Trails group, Mark Kaufman and his group, they've worked diligently to connect and bring all these trails and I think there's just more we can do. And so, you, I, you know, I go out there and I run a lot and so we see a lot of people on bicycles, skateboards are out there, runners, walkers, just families just strolling and walking with their dogs. I think there's a lot of opportunity to even highlight that more and help facilitate a faster development and bringing that into your town and making it more of a bedroom community. Any other questions?
So, now you said something about $50,000 and then we still owe $41,000.
No, no, no. So, the $50,000 included, that you guys contribute financially to the chamber for the Convention and Tourism annually. This year, Convention and Tourism proposed $9,000. So, this letter was proposing that we would continue, we would still like to have that partnership for that $9,000. But in addition to that, we want to help facilitate these studies and help Austin with, and Dave, with the economic development database, the land, the land use database, and also a marketing packet for economic development. And so that $41,000 is for additional projects that you would not normally see come out of the chamber with $9,000. Does that make sense? I'm wondering if I explained that right. Does that make sense? No?
It's $41,000 more than what they...
But we already...
But what was initial debt? So, I, you know, the mere fact that I have, when was that developed?
This 2005.
Okay, so it's 20 years old. And the fact that I've been on council, what, seven years, and I don't think we've looked at it except from my unified land development standpoint, isn't a very good sign. Although, again, I didn't see that as an economic development driver, I just saw it as an infrastructure preparation plan.
It has been used in the access management process.
It was, yes.
And we're not just going to walk away and say, "We won't reference those," because there may be, like, you know, others have said this evening, there may be some really good information that comes out of that, but I can guarantee you, if it's 20 years old, a lot has changed.
Yeah.
The direction...
And I don't think it's been updated on the annual basis as what was required.
And I would suggest that if you move forward with us, then on an annual basis, we just know that, I mean, we will have probably monthly meetings, we will be heavily involved with your planning group. That also makes recommendations to you guys. And then I would say probably at least annually, we need to get together with you and we need to go through that plan and identify what has been completed and what we want to focus in for that following year and then update that and make sure that it's being followed on an annual basis.
Does that include another $50,000 every three years?
For us to come in?
Well, I mean...
I think yes. I think yes.
Wow. That's pretty expectant. We can do a lot of roads with $150,000.
No, 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 it's not 50 a year. No, no, that, what I'm saying is that that would be the role of the chamber from here on out. We're not, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that next year, we're going to come back and ask you for another $50,000.
Maybe it'll be three years from now, but you will. You said in your own words that about every three years, this needs to be done.
You should revisit, that doesn't mean you have to have the plan redone. It just means that as a group, we revisit, we see what we've accomplished out of it, we see, make sure that it still aligns with what the current community... that it still aligns with what the current community and the elected officials want. But no, I'm not saying that you have to redo it every three years, I think we need to revisit and make sure that it aligns, it still aligns with the direction that the community wants to go and reevaluate what we've actually accomplished in that three years, instead of being put up on a shelf, which so many of these studies, it happens with them a lot. But no, it's not my intent to come back every year and say, I'm going to charge you $50,000 to look through your strategic plan or your comprehensive plan, that's not my intent.
Well, is this plan going to relieve and take care of all the problems of this town? I mean, don't we have people that are pretty smart in this town that could get together with you and do this without this $50,000 outlay?
I would say, so I think that's a double edged question. I think you have lots of smart, intelligent people who also have full time jobs and who maybe are looking for somebody to come in and facilitate it. I think that there's lots of people who want to be part of something like this, but really nobody has stepped up to drive this. And I think you'll see it, that's what will change with us getting involved.
Okay, so my, I'm not a big, I'm not good at 10, 20 years out, so the big vision is really a big step for me. But, and just like the person that was given, that I went to at the league meeting, when they talked about having a strategy, a long term strategy, and my question was, how do you have a vision like this and do it within a monetary amount that will work with our community? In other words, you know, when you, if, when you, sky's the limit.
You're right, yep.
But if it's something that we can't implement, because you did mention that when you had the community meetings, that they were concerned about the taxes, right? And so how do we know, is that part of the picture when they develop this?
Of how we address taxes?
Or no?
Or how we break it down to what, so you and I had this conversation, I think, a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, probably, because I'm always like, how do you make it?
No, you're fine.
Realistic, I'm trying to make a realistic vision of improvement.
No, we want, the last thing we want is to provide and produce a pie in the sky plan that we can never reach. We want to allow our people and you to dream, right? We do, but within reason. And it's okay for us, you know, we can go ahead and develop this plan, but it's okay for us to say, at this point in time, this aspect of the study is not financially feasible, because we do not want to put any more financial pressure on our residents. It's okay for us to say that, it's okay for the council to say that. And that's where the priorities come in, where we sit down after the plan and we prioritize what we feel we can do at this moment. Because really, all people really want to see is that we're progressing, we're moving forward.
That we have a plan.
That you have a plan.
We're supposed to have a vision.
It doesn't mean that once we get the plan, we're going to do everything in two years, because most communities can. You know, what it means is that we have a plan, we have a vision that the community and our community members helped facilitate and develop, and then from there, we figure out what we can afford, what grant funding is available to help us afford some of these projects. And then we're able to build over the next 10 years, an allocation every year of what we know we can potentially pay for, based on what we have prioritized. But you have a right, and it's okay for you to say no, and it's okay for you to say, just like you run your household budgets, we cannot afford the new car right now, and that's okay.
Yeah. Like I said, I just don't want a vision that we do, we spend a lot of money and have a plan that is unrealistic.
I can tell you, I mean, I mean, you've met with me a lot, a lot of people out here have spent a great amount of time with me, and I think anyone who has spent any time with me at all will tell you that that will not happen, because I'm not going to risk my reputation, my work ethic on it. And I live here now, my children are going to be in your school system for a very long time, because I am not going to be an empty nester for a very, very long time. And I love this community, you know, but I also want us to be fiscally responsible, because that will come back on me as well as a resident.
Well, I think it's probably something we've needed to do and implement, something we kind of have slacked. You know, I think, you know, when I started on the council Economic Development, there was a Marshall County Economic Director, and they actually had two, didn't they? And we, and we as a city, we never ever looked at economic development as a city, we always just kind of let the county deal with it, don't you think, Todd?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't remember having a lot of discussions on economic development at the city level.
Well, no, and like it's been said a couple of times, the situation's not necessarily improved since then, so now we maybe recognize it. There was a time not that long ago when there weren't that many empty storefronts, and it wasn't a big concern.
That we, that we as Marysville need to deal with it.
Right, it wasn't something we were too concerned long term about, whereas maybe we should have.
And maybe we better do it soon, kind of thing. All right, I've asked all my questions, what do you guys got?
This doesn't address streets, does it?
Yes, that's part of the urban, the urban scape, like, it'll address.
All city streets?
I would go as far as to say all, I will say all the major entrances and exits into the community.
See, that's one thing we need is.
That's one thing our.
Is all city, all city streets.
Our employees already do that.
And your employees are doing that?
We do, we evaluate on a yearly basis all the streets. But that's not to say that a fresh eye to our entrances wouldn't be a bad idea.
Right, and they're going to look at the infrastructure within those streets, any of the traffic, you know, you know, like, right now, I know you guys are meeting Thursday evening to discuss the rezoning for housing downtown. I've had a couple of you ask me my opinion on that, so I will give it. I think we need to be, again, we're piecemealing. I think we have to be really careful, we're making these long term changes. You know, I think it's important for a decision like that to include your Main Street and your Main Street Board Historic Preservation. Currently, you know, have we looked at traffic studies? Have we looked at how much traffic and parking at that decision would increase? I came out of Garden of Eden last week, and one of the apartment people was changing their oil right on Main Street, and the other person was shining up the rims of the vehicle. And so I would challenge, is that what we want? Is that the long term vision that we want for Main Street? In addition, we currently ask all of our businesses to park on the side streets, because they want to leave the parking open in front of the stores. If all of a sudden we increase our apartments and our living to include other areas, what are we going to do? You know, is there adequate parking spaces? And these are things that you guys, I'm sure, have thought about, I'm sure that you guys will address. You know, but I also had a council member saying, well, you know, we can always change it later, and I would think your legal counsel would tell you that once you do that, they're grandfathered in.
Oh, this proposal is for one half block south of Broadway, beginning at the alley.
Right.
The one half block south.
So it's just, you know, there's a lot of questions.
It's not Main Street, it's not Broadway.
And for new businesses coming in on Main Street, you work with them to give them like, not so much grants, but like, they do the decreasing loans, yes.
Correct. So some of the stuff that has been going on behind the scenes out of the chamber is, again, Michelle and I have been working very closely, our boards have been working together to not only identify and develop a plan for those types of programs, but we've also been having communication, we've had some attorneys and bankers involved, local investors, with the idea of bringing in a redevelopment cooperative downtown. And so that would be able to help us with startup businesses and encourage, you know, some development down there. It's incredibly difficult to get a new business owner who has the funding to purchase a downtown building, renovate it, and then start their business. And so we are, Director Weisler and myself and our boards are working very closely together, which is a fresh start. I mean, it's new, because that has not happened.
Okay, good. Other questions? So I know that this is kind of like a giant leap, like, we do nothing for like, at least the seven years I've been on council, and then now we have this big leap to be a master project at K-State. So I know it's kind of like overwhelming in some respect. On the other side, I kind of go back to what Todd said, where if we don't do something, our deterioration of our Main Street will probably continue. So you look at it and say, okay, so we have money in the industrial fund, we have over $100,000 in there, so the funding there is, I mean, we have money there. We transfer money to that industrial fund every month, and we don't have it earmarked at this time for anything specific. So.
Like you said, over five years, if you break it out that way, it doesn't seem like quite such a big pill to swallow.
And I will say, real quick, I know that I'm asking a lot, and I know that I'm asking for you guys, who barely know me, to have a lot of faith in my leadership, but I promise you that this is not something we're just going to do and then let's set thy, you know? And so I know what I'm asking is a lot, and so I appreciate you even considering it.
Well, I think too, the whole concept of her being part of the budget process is very helpful to me, because since I don't have that vision, I think it's really nice to have somebody who does have that vision to say, hey, we need to plan this, or it's never going to happen, kind of thing. Were you going to say something? I'm sorry, did I interrupt anybody?
I appreciate the coordination, the idea that the different entities can all kind of get on board with one project. Like you said, we've advocated this to the county so long, and maybe we can start working with the county more. A chamber office that does take this lead, I mean, this seems square in the wheelhouse of a chamber, I think that's a good thing to pursue.
I know, I don't think the chamber has ever approached us in something, taking on something like this, so this is all.
I mean, this is what Chamber is supposed to do, I mean, and unfortunately, that was lost in translation for the last few years, and so.
I've been a business owner downtown for 15 years, and I've seen a lot of changes come and go, and I'm with her, we have empty buildings, storefronts, and I don't ever remember until just of late. You know, even when they, you know, we had a big squabble about, you know, because there was parking on that side of my building, and then they put the horse in, and, but we've always had, even on the block west of me, on the same side, we have a lot of empty buildings, a lot of buildings that have just been left, you know, and it wasn't like that. You know, we had something in almost every storefront there, and now, it's, you know, I'm with these guys, this is going to be, it's not going to get any better by just sitting back.
I don't want to make it sound too dire, I mean, there's still good things going on, you have a new job, there's, you know, there's good things going on.
There's amazing things going on.
You know, it's one of those, I mean, if you don't work to prevent fires, then you better get used to standing by fires.
Yeah, it's just paying attention to what is going on.
And I think it'll be easier for you guys, once you have that plan in place, it's not so much piecemealing things together, you know? So, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Do you guys want to make any type of motion tonight? You want to think about it? It sounds like she said that they have slated to start in 2019, so we don't have a lot of time to think about it, they'll probably take some other community and do it, and I think it's, I think it's a big opportunity for us. I am anxious to see how we could make Marysville better, stronger, especially commercially.
With new business brings new people.
That's right. You're good.
Yeah, I think we just, we need to make sure when we get these results, we do run with them.
Utilize them?
We utilize them, we, you know, and we don't, you know, I think hopefully there'll be really high quality results, but that we don't get lost in the woods with them and we can.
The details?
Yeah.
And we have a plan for implementation?
Correct.
Yeah.
Which you will be provided, and then from there, we together will develop the long range plan, or the work plan, the annual work plan for 2020.
All right, gang, what do you think? Is there a motion to be made?
Madam Mayor, I move that we expend $41,000 at the industrial fund for, to the Marysville Chamber of Commerce for this study.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, amazing.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Do you guys want to go back and address Partnership for Growth membership? I do like the way that they said they can all work together. You know, obviously, there were some things in the packet that I wasn't aware of, that I think they can bring to our community, that, and so it sounds like they've been doing a lot of work. So do you guys want to go ahead and become a member of that? And if so, at what level?
I mean, I advocated for it a couple of years ago as well. I mean, I do think that they have something to offer at a relatively, you know, depending on how much you want to invest, a relatively reasonable rate for what they're doing. And since Blue Rapids and Frankfurt and Waterville, it feels like a really good cooperative effort, I think we should jump on board. I don't know what everyone's opinion is on what level.
Well, I was looking at the other cities, Blue Rapids, Frankfurt, are all at the bronze level.
$1,000, silver's $2,500, and gold is $5,000. Okay, they're above the bronze level.
Oh, I don't see them listed on here. Oh, there's Waterville. There, oh, even though it says bronze?
Yeah, bronze below.
Oh, because they're at a higher level, even though they're not quite silver? Is that right?
Yeah, they're in between.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion about a membership there?
I move that we join at the $1,000 level.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Is that set just one time?
It's an annual, it would be an annual.
You're going to make it an annual.
Well, we would just, we would, yeah, we approve it, but it's just where we would jump in at, I guess for 2019, is that correct?
That would be correct.
Okay.
Where would you propose that come from, darling?
The industrial fund.
The industrial.
Yeah, I thought so.
I'm looking at you like.
I'm taking it down again, yeah.
I would just like to encourage you to look at that whole idea you were saying, so everything you might include, that would be.
Oh, you're saying, have these, you want to come up for the podium?
Yeah.
So what you're, what you're trying to say is, first, we approve becoming a member, and then whatever specific things we would want, in addition to that, we would isolate that?
Correct.
Okay.
As an extra cost.
Okay, so I guess what we probably want to do first is become a member, and then I guess we have to analyze more what we need. It's all kind of overwhelming to me right now, but I think we can approve a membership today, and I don't know if we want to sit down and go through this maybe with Ellen and Jenny and maybe the finance and admin, and see if there's something that we want to do up and above that, based on what's being done, I mean.
That would make sure all the kind of columns are being filled.
Yeah. So I think it'd be best just to do the membership right now, and then have another meeting, a subcommittee meeting, and decide what additional things we need. What were you going to say, Diane?
Well, what do you get for just $1,000?
You get information.
You, well, for one thing, you'll know what's going around in the community. We have a newsletter that basically you know what's happening everywhere, because it will come to your email box. And did you read some of the things that we do for Marysville in here?
Right.
Okay, even our job site, most of the jobs come to Marysville, so that when we maintain a job for you, you maintain someone who stays here and pays taxes. So just the job site alone has been an incredible thing for our entire county, but especially for Marysville.
And you get that for the $1,000?
And you get that for the $1,000 then?
That's, I do that every day. I try to update that or look at these things. But look at these other things we do. There's just so much more. And all the different people we meet with, we're working on a food system right now, trying to figure out how we can.
Well, that's fine.
Well, okay, I don't have to go into more detail if you looked at this, but I kind of, if all you want to do is come in at $1,000, to me, that's kind of a token amount. You're the largest city in our county, and you're the county seat, and you're three times larger than any city. So it'd be nicer if you would at least come in at $3,000, if that's all you want to come in as a member. I just think we bring a lot of value to Marysville because you are the largest city. We do a lot of work here. Even though we haven't been moved in the past, we have done a lot.
So we do have a motion in a second. We can go ahead and proceed at this, and then we can always change it at once we have the meeting to see what additional work we need and figure out how involved we want to be with them. I mean, so do you want to go ahead and vote on this? At $1,000 on the industrial fund? We have a first and a second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven one. Okay. It doesn't mean that we won't change or it won't change in another year. We just kind of jump and get our feet wet, try to figure out what we need to do to coordinate with what the other one we just invested in, and we'll see. So we'll have a meeting.
All right.
With you and Jennifer and the finance and admin and try to figure out what additional work could benefit, could benefit what we're doing. All right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next one should be much easier, right, Wayne? Have you been waiting all this time for this?
I know. Monumental evening. I was glad to be here.
Did you ask to be at the front?
I was happy to sit down. That's exciting. Wayne Cruzy, President, Marshall County Arts Cooperative. We are so thankful that we have so many benefactors and VIP people, VIP sponsors, including the city of Marysville, who support us throughout the year. This year alone, MCAC raised $350,000 to bring arts to our county.
Wow.
And so we're going to say thank you to them to have a reception right before the concert by Contus, the premier men's vocal ensemble in the United States. That concert's at seven o'clock at the High School Auditorium, singing everything from classics like Still, Still, Still and Alba Maria to more contemporary pieces like Joan Baez's The River. So before that's the VIP reception at the Arts Center, we'd like to be able to serve wine and beer, please.
I just want to say, I had no idea that you'd get donations of that magnitude. No wonder we have such amazing programs. So kudos to our community for supporting MCAC. And that's really great information. And I praise art so often, and I'm so glad that our local community supports them to that magnitude, so.
And that's just one arts organization. I think if you put all the arts organizations together, we'd probably do half a million.
Yeah, that's amazing, which explains why it's so great. Okay, I want to entertain a motion to approve this.
Move approved request for alcohol consumption.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eight oh. All right, Wayne, looking forward to that concert. The next item is the fire contract. And the only concern I have is that the amount that we're paying them, they wanted to go from a mill level levy tie to a specific dollar amount. And when I looked at the amount that they're paying this year, it's almost $23,000. And now we're tying them in for the next two years at an amount lower than that. How do you guys feel about that? Or should we at least bump it up to 23 to be consistent with the last two years? I mean, this year. I just pulled what they paid this year, and it was, it was actually 22,992, which is almost $23,000. So I find it hard to believe that our costs are going down for gas or anything, and we're also trying to accumulate funding for the.
It would increase value.
Yeah.
It would have increased more than 23.
So I just, I mean, I'm perfectly fine with maybe just changing it to 23 and approving it like that, so at least it's flat for three years.
Their main complaint was that 23 was too high. It was not, they weren't willing to pay that. And they wanted 19. I talked them into 21. That's where that number comes from.
Yeah, expensive fire trucks are.
Well, the other thing is the mill levy and the townships are so low compared to the mill levies in the cities.
I know.
But that was their negotiating point.
I know, but I'm not sure. I agree that we should reduce it because they.
It doesn't seem like we should reduce it.
So maybe just keep it flat. I mean, in some way, if they have increased valuations coming, they are getting a better rate each time their evaluation goes up, right? If we keep it flat for three years, because what we're agreeing to is to keep it flat for the next two years.
If you do it for one, then the next one's going to come on, and everybody's going to want theirs decreased.
So you're saying they wouldn't agree to 23?
So what do they do, go find someone else? Or I don't understand.
They would go to the next town, probably.
And who is this? What town?
Township. But it's all the, I just asked them where was it, and it's all the perimeter.
Oh, are they?
It's all the perimeter around Marysville. So it makes sense. So I guess we can counter it and say 20.
This is the.
22.
Costs aren't going down.
Leave it what?
I say leave it.
At 21?
At 23.
At 23.
Leave it at 23 and see what they say?
Yeah, that's not unreasonable.
And we just bought that new rescue truck, and we have a lot of rural fire trucks too that we have to maintain, and our firemen.
The amount coupled with the amount we get from Elm Creek is exceeding the amount we budgeted for. So you put those two together, and you look at our fire contracts line in the budget, we're exceeding that number. So we are making more money than we are budgeting for. So it's, it's not that we're getting, this 21,000 will be in excess of what we budgeted for.
I just think our expenses aren't going down, and just keep it flat for three years is kind of a gift.
Yeah. And if we're looking to build a new fire station.
That's true.
We don't know if some new regulation will come down the pie yet. We don't know what's going to happen. They don't have that on them. We have it on us. Three years is a gift.
So you want to make a motion to approve the fire contract with that one changed from 21,000 to 23?
Yes.
And we'll give it to them, see what they say, right?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right. Move along here. Access management agreement, that has to do with the tower, and I just got.
No.
No. I'm sorry, that's, that has to do with KDOT about the access management plan. Hello? Okay, so I assume, I assume Craig has read this?
Yes.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the contract.
We do.
Cooperation.
Cooperation agreement with KDOT on the 36 access management plan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh, all right. Building ordinance. Okay, so the only thing I noticed on this building ordinance was it says, section five, number one, it says, that has an excess value of, it should say, an assessed minimum value of, do you see what I'm saying?
Okay.
Yeah.
And so assessed minimum value on 5-1, and the same thing on 5-3. But otherwise, I'm okay with it. So does anyone have any, want to make a motion to approve that as amended?
I move to approve the ordinance as amended with stating the minimum assessed value.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? I think it's.
I mean, it's housing, I mean, are we, is it rentals? Rental's going to be included in this, or is it just?
You mean if they build a house, if they build a rental on that property at least?
Yeah, I mean, like duplexes, is that considered? I guess what I'm getting at is, would deconsider duplex a basically a business or deconsider it, or do we want to incentivize homeownership or renters?
We're talking about housing.
Yeah, either. Rental or anything.
That does not say.
I think we need both. We do, but at the same time, I would look at it as if a homeowner's building a house, they say if you're renter or landlord, you're going to build a house there, duplex, whatever, you're going to write off that expense of demolition, that house and all that stuff, whereas a homeowner, you're not going to write that stuff off.
But I think we still want to encourage that. I mean, the whole point is to encourage development, whether it's rental or.
But I'm just saying, where do you want to prioritize? Because we don't have enough money to do probably as many as we'd like to do. Where do you want to prioritize it, I guess?
We're talking about small amounts here. We voted on 41,000 just a little bit ago.
Yeah. I mean, I hope it's so successful, we have.
We have a problem, that we have to start limiting it.
What a problem.
So let's, we could move forward and say it becomes too much money paid out, we can start limiting it.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Which one? Such 100? No, I mean, what section was that in? Did you?
On page 33? Is that what you mean? Are you trying to find it?
So basically, one of the, also in discussion, change rather than typically by, I don't think that would be a good deal.
What are we trying?
Never mind. I'm done.
Okay. Well, I think, I think we'll leave it like this and leave it open to anything, as long as I construct a house, I would consider it house.
Housing.
Yeah, housing. And if something happens, do you want to change that, construct a house to housing or just house?
Yes, I think it should say housing.
Okay.
We're making corrections. That would be more accurate.
Constructs, constructs housing? Housing, okay. Housing there and up there too. And why don't we remove all but and rebuild housing on page three, also, 5-3. Okay, that way we cover it. We're leaving that door open, but we can always close it, right?
Yes.
If we have too much usage, which would be a really good thing.
It'd be great.
Okay. So, so do we have a motion to approve as amended? Is it as amended?
Yes.
Yeah, as amended now? Is there a second? Who was my second?
Kevin's amended.
With my two, with all those amendments?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Does there maybe consideration of limiting, so we transfer, we budgeted so much money for it, and we, applications will be approved, or I don't know, base, and once the money runs out, basically, then we're done for that year or something like that. I don't know if that's something we need to include there.
I would rather transfer more money in there.
Me too.
Than to limit that.
But, I mean, you could always transfer money. I'm not saying tie it to a budgeted, because you could always, you can say we're transferring $10,000 for 2019. We always have the ability to transfer more as long as it's within our budgeting limits of whatever fund it's coming from.
Right.
So to say once, because we're going to run out, we can potentially run out of money if we just, if we don't limit it, but we could always have a, we could always put more in. I'm not saying that 10,000, we're stopping at 10,000.
Yeah, I don't want to stop at 10,000.
Right.
If we have people jumping on board and make improving blood structures, you go for it.
Right.
We should increase them for a thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, it's just.
But it has to come out of the general fund?
No, it says typically from the general fund.
So can one person come back more than one time?
If they're doing multiple lots.
Sure, are they? Okay.
Different structures, obviously.
Okay.
All right. We have a motion.
No, that's, finish that.
To vote on this, you're okay? I was going to vote on it.
No, this was something else.
Okay. All in favor, as a motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight oh. All right, Diane, what is it?
Okay, on the fire contract?
Yeah.
We have Debbie Price on there yet, so we need to change that to Cindy, I think.
Okay.
A city clerk.
Okay. Okay, she'll change that before it goes out for print?
Yeah.
Okay, or for signing? Okay, thanks for bringing that up, Diane. All right, so now, now we did the fire.
Now we're the Patterson.
Where is the, oh, the cell tower, it's under you. Keep looking for the cell tower. Okay, so now we're at the Patterson Trust donation, which is on page 35, that letter.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I like to make a motion that we send this letter to our attorney and have him decide the content of what this lady intended before we make a motion or accept or reject her intention.
You want our city attorney to talk to her?
I want the attorney to come back and tell us what she meant in her letter, but I want the attorney to do it. That's what my motion is.
To send it to the attorney?
Yes. Because it's not clear. We all got a copy of it to read. Are we going to help the Girl Scouts? Are we going to stop what the Girl Scouts are doing right now, and we're going to take this property? Or are we going to let the Girl Scouts continue to use this property?
It says it's currently using part of the land to plant an orchard.
What if we ask him to negotiate a proposed, I don't know what, you would be a memorandum of understanding, what would the document be if we were to move forward?
To accept a donation.
Yeah, a donation, I don't know, contract or whatever.
Yeah.
With, because if that way, if he worked with them, then they would clarify all that in that contract, and then they would come back to us for approval or disapproval. Because that would save us that.
I'd just like the attorney to.
Craig, we can ask Craig to draft up a acceptance letter clarifying exactly what they want and bring it to us. You guys are in agreement to do that?
Then we can make the motion from there.
Okay. So I just think we just need a consensus to do that, to send it to the legal counsel to draft something and speak with them directly. Is that, you guys okay with that?
I just don't think it's money. We need to be spending on lawyer fees or over complicate this.
This is purchasing property. We're going to have to spend some legal fees.
It is.
But that's why I thought if we move forward with it as a way.
But it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty clear what she, she's not demanding much.
If he, if our attorney was at the same time creating a purchase agreement for us to sign off on, then we would have two birds at one stone.
Right.
We would be paying extra.
And that's what we're.
We'd be just paying the one.
That's what we're created to do, yeah. To contact her.
Definitely not spending.
Okay, that's consensus of counsel. Send it to lawyer, direct, have her communicate, which is expected, draft up a letter of acceptance which is expected, draft up a letter of acceptance based on what she wants. Perfect.
I did, I did call her, and thanked her for giving me the...
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Well, good for you, Diane. Oh, she did include her cell number?
Yeah.
Okay.
And when she answered, she said, "This is Beth," and I thought, "Did I have the wrong number?" And then I realized it was Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
But I think, I think she was glad I called, so...
Yeah, that was very nice.
So, I did give it to her for a little bit.
That was very nice of you. A little personal touch.
Yeah.
Okay, the next item is the volunteer waiver form, and the only thing I brought up was, is that, when Seneca drafted theirs, in their minutes, it said that they included this, two sentences. It said, "Volunteers will be subject to background checks as determined by the city administrator." Second sentence, "No person who is required to register as a sexual or violent offender may serve in a volunteer position with the city that could be reasonably expected to have contact with minors." So, I just thought, they had already thought about that. They have a volunteer, they drafted theirs as well. I mean, even if we just have the second sentence, I'm okay with it. "No person who is required to register as a sexual or violent offender may serve as a volunteer."
So, when they, when they file this, well, just somebody here would have to check the database?
Yeah. I think that's a reasonable protection, I think it makes sense. So, do you, we just wanna add that as a certain number, and approve it with that added in?
Who's, who's gonna be managing these here, just for clarification? Since I know you wanna know. Who does this, whose desk does this go on to, when it comes to City Hall?
Probably old Cindy Holly desk. Not Cindy Holly, that...
The new Cindy Holly desk.
The new Cindy Holly desk? You the city clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
It will not be the person trying to pay the bills.
All right, so, I'm trying to figure out how this...
Just put it in as a number nine.
Put it in as a number nine? Okay. Do you want both sentences?
I think so.
I would advise against the first sentence.
You would?
Yes, as, as far as, if we're doing background checks, I think it's all or nothing.
Because then, if we're doing background checks, we're actually contracting, spending money.
If I'm going, "You need a background check, oh, you're good," that I could be discriminating.
Well, I think it's easy to check, too, to see who's registered as a...
Yeah, that's the simple one.
And that's just a check.
Whereas, background check, you're actually contracting with some outside entity and spending money, whereas, the check the database is free.
I think that is a great idea, just for protection. So, we'll just add the second sentence as number nine. So, I would approve, I would entertain a motion to accept this with the number nine added with that one sentence.
Move to approve the waiver and release claims indemnity agreement for the city of Marysville with the addition of number nine, whatever it...
The one sentence?
Yeah, whatever it reads.
"No person is required to, no person who is required to register as a sexual or violent offender may serve in a volunteer position with the city that can reasonably be expected to have contact with minors."
Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
I'm nervous about that one.
You're nervous about it, in what respect?
Because they'll check my background.
Oh, shit. I'm sure you're hiding a lot, Diane.
Fourteen ninety-five, and you can get online and find the whole I R I.
Everything you want to know.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Seven, one? Okay, Cindy, do you want me to give you this sentence?
Yes, I do.
There it is, right there.
I might've got it in email somewhere, but that's all right.
I got an email, too, if you need it.
Mayor, a comment, in order to volunteer for Catholic charities, I had to sign that I would have a background check.
And to have you? Yeah.
As far as I know.
They still letting you work?
Mm-hmm.
We need a motion to recess the city council meeting?
Move recess city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aiden, call to order the Public Building Commission roll call, please. Yes?
Pivia?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Throng?
Present.
Barnes?
Here.
All right, we have a resolution for signatures for the PBC.
Move authorize the signatures for the PBC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aiden, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the commission?
Move adjourn public building commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, we'll resume the regular order of business. I don't know of any notices or hearings, we'll move on.
Well, there will be the hearing Thursday night on the...
Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission.
Regarding creating the zoning, huh?
Mm-hmm, the zoning, one half block south of Broadway.
Yeah, we sent that to them. You guys have any thoughts about what they said, like, we're doing something wrong?
I do after...
After listening to her.
I've got a couple, two people, yeah.
That are opposed to her.
Called me on it, and they said that maybe we should hold off until this comes back, and we'll know more. And I kinda tend to agree, if we're spending that much money, hopefully, we'll have some results to base on.
Might be a good idea.
Yeah, I think maybe she was right on that.
At this time, there's only, like, two possibilities.
You're talking about the person that's following, doing it right now, and then you're, like, Dr. Gray, potentially?
Yeah, that would be...
They have those two?
From all, from all, that entire section.
But all, but also, I mean, Blake, that was advocate, a little, the, that's also an argument against it. It's so small, it's, it's almost too specific. I mean, if it's only gonna benefit two, why bother? I mean, make it part of a big plan, make it part of a master plan, where it'll actually have a more of an impact, whereas, this just seems like a missection.
Well, that's why it was, the, it went, can't remember the streets, instead of just a little section, it is a, a...
It's a lot of parking lots.
A number of blocks.
So, are you, are you saying you want to have them just approve those, that one block?
No, I'm saying, I don't think we should do anything at all.
Wait, wait on it completely, until we find out what, I mean, we're just spending fifty thousand dollars on something.
What's, what's on the planning commission right now, besides that? Is that the only thing they're meeting on?
That's all that, that I have seen on the agenda.
We can't pull it back once we've sent it to them, or can we?
So, once they, they can create those, and then, then, what's the next step? Who has, do they come back?
Then they'll bring it to council.
Does it come back to us?
Then they'll bring it to council.
Then they'll, they'll make a recommendation, then it comes back for us to approve it on the ULDC.
But if we have got a lot, a lot of council members, which, my understanding, have some concerns, can we withdraw it, so they don't spend time that we may not, may be used in, I mean, do we just wanna let them roll?
It's already published that there's a...
Right.
There's a hearing, so we...
There's a hearing.
So, we need to move forward with it?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I guess, you know, Darlene, you're gonna be there, and maybe you can take a moment to talk Jennifer Duffy more. Oh, David, I didn't know you were still here.
Here he comes.
You're hiding back there in the back row.
Here he comes, strolling up.
I always am. I could do a courthouse case.
I guess, so...
Two meetings.
We're having a double hearing, right?
Two meetings with you people.
Oh.
Said, "I don't wanna spend all that time and money to do this public hearing." Hundred and thirty to forty letters went out.
So, we'll see what happens?
I don't...
You'll see if there's any feedback, right? If anybody shows up?
Correct.
I know, I know you feel like you're, you're just...
Have you had, have you had any feedback, Dave?
I've had two calling, and one's on Main Street, and one was the church, and they had no problem with it, so. It doesn't matter to me, but that's why I came twice to see about doing this.
So, you're having a hearing on the rezoning, then you're having a hearing on the tax amendment for the ULDC, and then you come back to us?
Both of them, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I guess we could, it's not, it's not a bad idea to find out how they feel about it. Right?
What she says, right now, really, it only affects probably two buildings, but it would affect the lots over there above Chuteys, by the Art Center.
Right.
They wanna build stuff there sometime, down...
Well, no, it wouldn't, because it doesn't go that far, it stops at End Street.
No, it does not. Takes in all, there is some C2 that goes south of Elm Street and stuff.
I thought, I thought, I thought the specific location was starting at the alleys, going south a half block from Fourth to Tenth. I thought that's all it was.
Takes in, we can do the, there's very few of the others, you had a map right there in front of you.
Can I just plant that one comment, because I do serve on the planning commission? Dave brought this to the council first, I just would like to point that out. We would've never proceeded had you guys not sent it back to us to proceed. I wanna make that point.
I know, but I'm, I'm still going on the area.
I'll send my map around, but I want it back.
This is what was in the planning commission?
Mm-hmm.
This is all of this?
Yes.
You guys all got this map and stuff?
Yeah, we did. But we didn't also have his proposal at that time. I mean, when the world changes, you have to follow the changes.
You knew, you knew what the dynamics of the city...
Right, but now that we've had new proposals...
And we had several hours of discussion and public hearings about this, so, like Dave said, he's went to an awful lot of work to make this happen.
Yep.
Because we were under the impression that people wanted storefronts, even if it was converted to a small apartment, they wanted something in there versus nothing. And that's what the premise was.
But it doesn't include Main Street.
It does not include that as well, so, anyway.
Yeah, there are a few, and then you got properties down in Boss's block, right? There's, there's area there that could be converted into residential stuff. There's not a lot of property there that can be converted unless they tear stuff down.
Right.
They're all worried about parking, and what they're, what they're complaining about is nothing to do with this. This is off of Main Street.
All right.
If you wanna, if you wanna change something, do away with your apartments above Main Street, because that's what she was complaining about, changing oil and shining her tires. Those people live on Main Street.
Okay, well, I don't think it's fair to paint with the they brush, since there's multiple people with multiple different concerns. My concern isn't about oil changing necessarily, or long-term this, it's to have a plan. I, I, I agree, this seemed like a good idea at the time, because it was the fire we saw, but now, I see that there might be bigger fish to fry, and this might be part of a bigger picture, and so, I think it's worth reconsidering. That's just where I'm at. I mean, I, the people I've talked to, it was for various reasons, it wasn't just that. I mean, there's, there's more than one reason to be against it, and there's more than one reason to be in favor of it. My thought is, we, we had one understanding of the way this, of moving forward then, after this new proposal with the forty-one thousand we were gonna spend, I want to maybe reconsider whether that would be the best course of action, long-term.
And then these people that you had up there tonight talking about everybody communicating to get together, knew all this was going on, and not one of those people came into this office to discuss it with me.
They talked to me.
Can I, can I still tell you, I didn't think this, this proposed C2A crossed Elm Street.
Do you don't see Elm Street there?
I do see Elm Street, but I never thought it crossed Elm Street. I thought we were talking about half blocks only. When you say I had this map...
Yes.
Well, we always talked about a half block south of Broadway.
We don't think it has blocks south of Main Street.
I thought it stopped at Elm Street. I never thought it, our proposal crossed Elm Street.
You just approved a C2 on the other side of Elm Street, two months ago.
But I thought we were, in the minutes that we approved, it specifically says...
It doesn't matter to me what we do, it doesn't matter to me what time I spent, it's your time, I'm your time, you pay me, we can start over sometime later. It doesn't matter, I just thought we would save all that time and expense to do that.
Must be in the minutes prior to this, when we talked about it. Did you guys think it crossed Elm Street?
No.
Yeah.
I did not.
I didn't either.
I thought it stopped at Elm Street.
I thought it went from alley to main.
To Elm.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it.
That was it.
That was always my impression. I don't care what is C2 over here, I thought our, oh, C2A was only gonna be to Elm Street, and that's only the property I looked at. I, this, on the other side of Elm Street, I never thought we were considering moving that to 2A.
Is it colored?
You colored it, yeah.
Okay. That's just the only little bit that was left there.
But when I drove around and looked, I only looked at those half blocks...
Why?
To Elm Street.
You had the map.
I thought...
I'm not, not getting...
I thought everything that we discussed, you guys seen this map? I don't know, I, you got, I think we had missed in, in understanding on where it was gonna go. I thought it was just a half block. Gina, you thought it was half block?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember specifically.
Terry, did you think it was just Elm Street, or do you think it was properties south of Elm Street?
That includes, you're talking about the Dennis, the new Dennis place?
Well, that, this new Dennis was on the, on the south side of Elm Street, but I didn't think we were looking at south of Elm, the street, for the rezoning.
It's not south of Elm.
The new, the new...
Or the new place.
Is, yes.
Number three, I'm going to...
Well, I thought it included, yeah.
The new zoning areas would include the half block to the south of Broadway Street from Tenth to Fourth. That's exactly what I thought it meant, the half block.
I don't think, I don't think that's, the minutes are correct there.
Well, that's because that's exactly what I believed it to be.
That's the half block to the south of...
From the alley.
To the Elm Street.
To Elm Street.
There's a half block south of Broadway.
Okay, you go half block off of Broadway to the alley.
Uh-huh.
And then from the alley to Elm Street.
That's exactly what I thought it was.
Because they have those apartments above?
The Chuteys.
Yeah. No, 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 not Chuteys on that side, Chuteys is on the east, we're talking about where the west.
Oh, the Helvings.
Helvings, yeah. There's apartments up there, right off the alley.
The half block south of Broadway is to the alley. The half-block south of Broadway is to the alley.
From the alley to Elm Street. New would include the half-block to the south of Broadway from 10th to 4th.
That's how it was stated.
Yeah. The half-block.
Half-block from Broadway.
The half-block to the south of Broadway.
That would go to the alley.
Yeah.
Not from the alley to Elm Street. That's where... Yeah.
I don't think that's what you said.
Include the half-block to the south of Broadway.
Off of Broadway halfway would be the alley.
Well, I thought it was just the half-block.
So that would be...
What's the difference though?
Well, I would just... Well, number one, you're not... You've made the comment that property next to the League of Arts Center, well, I never intended that to be rezoned.
And you want to leave it for what? Commercial stuff?
Yeah. I was... I just thought that was going to stay C-2. Well, at this point in time, they've done the hearing. They're going to have a meeting. They're going to have a hearing. They're going to make a text amendment, and they're going to come back. And then we can...
We're not going to make a text amendment unless the zoning goes through.
Right.
If the zoning passes, then we can do a text amendment.
And then you make a text amendment, and then we have to approve the text amendment.
Yeah. Approve both. Yeah, approve the zoning.
So... At this point in time, I think we should just let them meet and proceed. Sorry, Dave.
At least we know the difference. I'm not building anyplace.
You already built.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You going to just turn it down then?
What?
Might as well just turn it down then. If it comes to you guys, you have to send it back to us, and if you don't approve it, first to change it, so. Soon it'll be back to worse thing for two, three months, so.
Okay. So let me just say one thing. There is one property owner that is waiting for this, correct? So...
So do we do this for one property owner or not?
So this also takes in the Helberin Center going south.
Yeah, but that Helberin Center was always what I expected to be included anyway.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So...
I mean, what is the difference if that half-block is residential usage? Why would not everything south of there, in those two or three blocks, half-blocks pieces, not be the same?
To be honest, I just didn't look at it. You know, we remember we met, and we said, "Let's go drive and look at it." And then the next meeting, I looked at just the half-block between the alley and Elm Street. I never looked across the street. That's just my only comment. But if you don't think that's a concern, then we can just go forward and...
Well, it's all in, or take it all in. Everything south of the block. Everything, one little half-block south of Broadway.
That's zone C-2. Okay.
That's what's in the public notice.
Okay. All right.
You see, that'd be the only other piece probably on there would be that property right there. And if this block between the two is residential, what's the difference if that would be residential?
Well, okay, let's think about this. So we could go ahead and do this.
That's what Shutey has always been going to put in there.
And if we... If the zone... If our studies come back and say we should change it, we'll change it back.
I don't like the yo-yo effect.
I know.
I don't either.
No.
Because then they've already been working on plans, but they haven't started anything yet. You pull it back, and then we're like...
But right now, we called a hearing that we're going to adjourn.
Yeah, but I mean, but that's... I mean, I know.
Okay. Why don't we do this? Why don't they have a hearing? Make sure there's no feedback, and just stop there. And that way, that we'll have that part done.
Just take no action.
And take no action after that. But at least you get feedback. In case people come, if people have been told there's going to be a hearing, they should have the hearing and just get the feedback, and then close the hearing, and then they don't have to go any farther with it. If you guys are all in agreement, now...
We just turn it down then. That's set no recommendation on.
Right.
Okay.
I think we have to do that.
So then we have to start over again to get it...
So the feedback is you people.
Feedback? You mean, we're the one that's affecting if it's going forward? I guess, yes. I want to address just the one person that's going to be very upset, because she believes that the last two months that we've been working toward this goal. So with that being said, instead of rezoning the whole area, do we rezone one specific area? Which we can do in a text amendment?
Wasn't... Didn't you get advice from the League on doing the C-1A and the C-2A? That's the way the League suggested doing?
Yeah, we rezone it, and then we just put it in a text, but...
The hearing's already been published. It's in two days.
Right.
You're legally bound to have a hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you want to try to change something, you're going to have to consult with your attorney today. It'll be the only advice I have.
Well, we'll have the hearing.
Whether I want to change the hearings or not, they want to...
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought you were saying you were checking for the hearing.
No, we'll do the hearing. It's whether planning permission...
No action after that.
Well, we're not... I don't think it's appropriate for us to be standing here or sitting here negotiating what the planning permission is going to vote. That is completely inappropriate. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I think we'll let the hearing go. They can vote.
I mean, I'm just saying, you can't be standing here at a public meeting saying that we're going to turn something down when we're going to have a public hearing in two days. That's disturbing to me.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll move forward. We'll let it be. All right. We're going back to the consent agenda. Darlene, why'd you bring this up? I'm just kidding. All right.
I always bring up the hearings.
I'm just kidding.
So what time is the commitment? What time is the...
Is it seven o'clock? Okay, so the consent agenda... Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A-do. Next thing is appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve the appropriations ordinance number 3686, amount of $276,224...
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Well, I might mention a couple of large items. We paid another bill to BG Consultants for the design phase on Highway 77. And then there were two payrolls during this period, which came to $85,662. Plus, we paid our last quarter to the Chamber of $2,250. So that makes the $9,000 that we pay to them every year. And then we also paid Marshall County Development for the fourth quarter, $375.
Okay. Thanks, Darlene. We have a motion and a second. And Cindy, want to do real quick? Boss?
Yes.
Pipia?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Tuck Frye?
Yes.
Schröder?
Yes.
Schrom?
Yes.
Throm, not Schrom.
Art, yes. Sorry. A-do.
All right. Austin?
First thing I got up is the bid specs for demolition of the two properties, one at 1210 May and the other one at 308 May. They each specify what's there. And the only thing I would probably add, now talking with David about this, if they destroy existing sidewalks, they put them back as they were. If their equipment drives over them and destroys... I haven't looked at the...
Do you document that in advance?
Yeah, we would probably take pictures of what's there in advance. So I would just ask that to add to the bid specs.
Would that be curb and gutter as well? If curb and gutter's in place? Just because if they're grabbing some heavy enough to destroy a sidewalk, they could potentially pop a curb too?
Might be a little slippery.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Sidewalk.
So sidewalk, curb, and gutter, reestablish... Any damage repaired to original condition?
Yep.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think maybe it ought to include pro or con about burning. There's nothing in there if all of a sudden they want to torch it.
They can't torch it.
It's not... It doesn't say they can't in this.
Landfill receipts. I said you've got it pretty well covered in that. Landfill receipts, authorized landfill.
Disposed of it, permitted landfill only.
Yeah.
Debris, disposed of and authorized landfill. Okay. I think too, that would be against our ordinance. You can't burn anything but leaves and twigs. So... We hope they have torches. But yeah, I think that... Do you see that, Terry, in seven?
Yeah.
I think that should...
I just figured if they all of a sudden have a fire there, it sure might save a lot of work.
They don't get paid according to that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve these bids adding about any damages to the curb and gutter to be repaired to original condition?
Move to approve bid specs for demolition.
With that amendment?
With the amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A-do, all right.
Next one is the cell tower. The company representing... I use that in a loose term. U.S. Cellular presented an agreement for them to do a survey on the proposed land. And I brought that to the attention of the Admin Finance Committee. They discussed it, came out with two questions. One, they didn't have an answer to, and they told me they didn't have an answer to it. The other one, they didn't answer at all.
The one they was a hundred... We asked her how many watts it was?
Yes, and they said they needed a study to be done, which is required by the FCC in the first place. And to do that, they have to go through the rest of this. Or at least that's their process.
What was their other question?
Where's the closest U.S. Cellular tower? And they didn't answer that.
Okay. Fine.
Yeah.
Okay, there's another question.
She said she'd get back with me on that. We just never had.
Okay.
So this is not an agreement to build a cell phone tower. It is an agreement to let them access our land to survey it and actually find out if it is worth their time putting a cell phone tower there.
So since we had our meeting... Brian Frogel just stopped me today, and I told Austin about this, that he had concerns about it being in the middle of the center field because of batter's vision.
I like the flashing.
But he just said that's why they don't have the scoreboard in the center field, is because of the batter. I did not know that. And I told him I was grateful for him to bring that to our attention, because we wouldn't have known that otherwise. So he was against it for that reason. Oh, and he was also against it because he didn't think it was good. You know, even if the studies don't confirm it, he has the whole outfield filled with soccer kids for six or eight weeks a year. He didn't like the idea of having it there.
And I had a couple of constituents that are not very happy about it either, so...
But they've been surveying other sites, though, and I know one of them is right smack on the highway.
They just don't think we need to have cell towers in the city of Marysville.
I've been advised to tell you that... Let's see. I'll quote this. This is coming from Craig. "Advised not to make any decisions that would restrict or prohibit the installation of cell towers." This came off a question that I had to the League and to our attorney, whether we could restrict any cell phone tower, tower alike, in the city limits. And it's a kind of... First thing that our turn... Or the League said, "This is not an easy yes or no answer, but the very simplified answer is no." And that comes from General Counsel.
We can't restrict any tower height of any time?
That seems hard to believe, doesn't it?
There can be... There are reasonable zoning. It says you can have reasonable zoning expectations. They didn't use expectations. Regulations, there we go. But I couldn't get out of either of these two spur of the moment, because I was talking to them earlier, what the reasonable expectations or reasonable regulations...
Other cities have rejected these in Kansas.
Yes.
I know of other cities who've done it and approved them for that matter, but...
Yeah. And the only thing in our ULDC specifies 60 feet or above.
Right. We did look that up. But I just think, since Brian was pretty against it... And, you know, I didn't even think about it. I thought it should have been my first question, is to ask Brian, "What do you think about this behind the center field?"
Well, I don't know if people are just not finding out.
But aren't there light poles?
To the right and left of center field, yeah.
There's light poles, yeah. Gina, do you have an opinion?
Yeah, no. I went around, and I told... I called Carlin, told her I was going to stir the pot on this one. So sorry, everyone. It's me.
You're the one.
I've gone around, and I have gotten 115 signatures from community, people from within the city that do not want a cell tower. I have encouraged every single one of them to do their own research. I have done research and provided it for every single one of you. The United States is behind on linking cancer to cell towers. However, other countries have done this link, just like other countries have banned a whole lot of other chemicals and pesticides that the United States has not banned yet.
Is this yours?
That's all mine.
Okay.
Yes. But yeah, you do like to see all these signatures.
I'm just curious.
And this was just since Sunday.
Were there any people who were like, "No, I just want better cell service" when you were going around? Oh, I mean, theoretically, there would be people.
No. I had three people tell me that they didn't want to sign it for whatever personal reasons. And I told them, "This is just me as a concerned citizen."
Well, you got to know your neighborhood.
I did. We walked it. Greg and I both walked it.
Well, that's good. Everybody knows who you are now.
Yes. We did. And then from that, it kind of snowballed to, "Oh, my goodness, all these other people." And then it's... Sorry, but it's crazy. And I know that there's at least three other sites that had been approached prior to the city of Marysville about having a cell phone tower, and all three of those sites turned it down.
For the same company?
Mm-hmm. So I think that we should...
So what was your question that you had them sign?
Oh, it just says, "Concerned citizens of Marysville, Kansas, and the proposed cellular tower at Feltleson Field." And that's all it was. But I told each of them to do their own research, and they were all like...
So you just had them sign that they had concerns about this tower going in?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, not that we'd approve it, but I'm really surprised, and I think I said it before, that they didn't ask us about putting it on the water tower, since it's a tower, and they've put them on lots of buildings.
They've put them on a lot of buildings.
Yeah, you'd be surprised, sir.
Look on YouTube of all of the radiation waves that are on... That they have on devices, and it's crazy.
The water tower might be restricted by the airport.
For height, but we did put a ring around the top to put antenna arrays on.
I think...
I'm not saying we'd approve it.
No, no.
Oh, but you're saying, because it wouldn't have to go 50 above that.
Right, and it wouldn't be an outfield of a ball field. It wouldn't be a new location. It would just be added on to an existing structure. It seems like that would smooth... They would want that to be kind of smooth, but I'm just curious about that.
Dennis Mason has a lot of knowledge about the towers.
Well, you know...
And he's also, I guess, locally works with the FCC.
He does training and stuff for... Well, okay. So my bottom line is, if Brian is against it, and Gina has 115 people against it, and it's $5,000 a year...
Which it's... This is not neither a... I did want to bring this to your attention, that there is a chance that there is another site out there that actually said yes.
I don't know what the $5,000 means. Was that negotiable?
That was... Of course, it's negotiable. It is.
I know of cell phone towers that have gone up in pasture and paid more than that. So this is obviously more prime real estate.
The ones in pasture are 150 feet tall.
Or 300 or 500.
So they still take the same footprint, don't they?
The others are 300 to 500.
3500 feet tall, and those guide wires go out.
Some of the ones aren't 3500 feet. They're smaller intermediate towers.
Well, you know, the next question is, okay, so we say we don't want you to put it on our property, and it goes up in your backyard.
That's kind of what I wanted to bring up.
That's all.
Is there, is there a way that we can put in an ordinance that you cannot have one in city limits? I mean, this is crazy.
Sounds like a, sounds like a no.
How do you restrict anything else and not that? Is there a specific statute that you can't prohibit?
Telecommunications is highly guarded.
Regulated by the federal government.
Because what, what would stop them, like the house we're getting ready to demolish at 13, at May? I mean, what would stop them from buying that, tearing down the house, and putting the tower right there? I mean, there's not really anything stopping that, is there?
Not, not right now.
Not right now, yeah.
No, because they just want to make us all a statistic.
If they wanted to buy an old house in that area that needed tore down and tear it down, they could probably get some incentive money now.
No, they have to rebuild.
2,500 to knock down the house.
Yeah. Say get some money out of it, and then.
No, it's, I, I do, if we could find a way to, to regulate it, that's, that's, that's great.
To regulate it, what are you saying?
As far as where they can put it. And if that was a possibility, I'm, I'm not saying, this is a great idea, it's not a great idea. I wanted to bring.
How can they even come to us and tell us that they want it in town? When they are all outside of the city limits, what does that, I mean, why? Because they're going to 5G and all these other, I mean, that's what everybody kept asking me, and that's why I said, the only thing that I can think of is because of 5G. But I don't, I still don't understand why it's in the center of town. And I can go get more signatures. That's not gonna be a problem.
It's not, it doesn't have.
Oh, there's other people that are like, I'll do it for you. There's a lot of people.
Yeah. The issue right now is that I'm getting legal advice from two different sources saying not, that at this point in time, we can't regulate it, or don't have enough information to regulate.
For, for no reason. I mean, you can say, well, we can't ban telecommunications, but we can't, can we, we can't buy height, we can't buy high percentages in ISO, I mean, there's gotta be a workaround.
Why can't we put it out by the other water tower?
I'll read, I'll read the general counsel's, from the league's entire answer. This is not an easy yes or no answer, but the very simplified answer is no. And actually, let me read my question. I have a question about cell towers. Specifically, can a city prohibit cell towers being built within city limits? The reason why I'm asking is, is that US cellular is looking to install 50 to 60 foot cell tower on our land, and lease it from us, but some on the council don't want the cell tower close to residential areas. If we denied them use of city's land, can we prevent them from placing it in other locations in the city? This is not an easy yes or no answer, but the very simplified answer is no. The Federal Telecommunications Act in 1966, 1996, preempts any local statute, regulation, or other legal requirement that prohibits, or has the effect of prohibiting, has the effect of prohibiting, the provision of telecommunications service. The TCA does still preserve some reasonable local zoning authority. In addition to the TCA, you have to look at both state law on small cells and the FCC small cell order, depending on what kind of towers being requested to be built. Basically, you need to get your city attorney involved, because these decisions are very fact-specific. Your city attorney is the best position, has, is in the best position to advise you on how to proceed, and ensure that you meet the necessary deadlines. Craig's answer. I won't be able to provide input in the, in advance of tonight's meeting, but the council should be advised that this is potentially a complicated legal issue. So I would advise not to make any decisions that would restrict or prohibit the installation of cell towers.
So, is there a way around it? I mean, okay, yes, is there a way, there's gotta be a way around it. I mean, can, can we work at a some sort of franchise agreement angle, where we can make it so price impossible?
I just got the FCC's judgment on, on small cell, which this might be, they didn't tell me if it's, if it's small cell or not, but according to, which is different. They severely limited our capacity to charge, I think, in the small cell case, which is that 5G you're talking about, which I don't think this cell tower is, because it doesn't fit the dimensions. They said $275 per site.
Per what?
Per year. $275 per site, per year.
So, yeah, so basically, and all of our contacting our congressional representatives and everything is not gonna mean a hittlebeings next to the telecommunications lobby?
I did exactly that, yes.
So the, whose are these? You don't know, they're just cell towers?
Because they can, they can put, they can put each others on each other's towers, so it's probably all of the bad.
So you US cellular on this site said, they, they're, it would be their tower, but at least one other provider could latch on to this tower that they're proposing.
So where is this ass, where is this other site that they're looking at putting it on?
Right next to the, as far as I know, right next to the mixer.
That's the one that I, yeah, somebody contacted, to the street here.
The car lot.
That's next to it.
The car lot fires, it's Carlin.
It's just like Blue Valley Telephone.
50 by 50 is all they need.
Like Blue Valley Telephone putting those ugly cables. When I look out my front window, okay, they had one, now they added a second one.
But they're coming back and taking the one off.
I think.
So at least still have one.
You only have one, can I get that?
I think we need to have further discussions with our attorney on this. I think what we do is, we just don't, we send it back, ask him to come to the next meeting, and explain our options, okay?
And maybe ask Dennis Mason.
I think, I think really, we need a legal authority on, because the opening that the league gave us was reasonable zoning authority.
Yeah.
That's the door that I was given, right, in this answer anyways.
I think, I think we just.
We don't know how many towers there are in Marysville, let people use right now. I mean, like antenna towers and stuff.
What's the one by Lyons Park, what is that?
That's ours.
That's yours?
That's yours. That's ours, we want to keep that.
Oh, so I was wondering, maybe if you could, you limit it to like 25 or 35 feet, in an ordinance.
Yeah, but that doesn't keep the micro.
Yeah.
So that'll get it spread out even more.
That's about three short towers.
Put one about 10 minutes long next to it, without us doing this.
Why don't we ask the attorney to come back to me? We're not gonna make any action on that right now, and just keep us informed.
Why dare?
Why?
I think they're trying to get one in the middle of town, or, and it's probably more for data, and like she said, 5G.
So we can have statistics, and if five to 10 years.
I know. Well, carrying them in your pocket ain't good either, we all do that, yeah.
Yeah, but you knowingly do that, it's not forced upon you.
Okay, we're gonna have legal, leave that. Moving on, moving on, finances.
General fund is sitting at 740, 740,000, A and 58, about 113,000 over last October, ending mountains. We should end, I believe we should end the year on positive note, barring any large expenditures popping up. The water fund has been decreasing due to payments made for the, this year's waterline project. CER fund continues to increase due to low expenditures. We should be able to make the majority, if not all, of the transfer scheduled for the end of the year. Sales tax fund took a large hit due to the street projects, project bills coming in, but sales tax receipts have been consistently higher than the previous year. For instance, this year, or this last month, we got $10,000 more in our sales tax receipts than previous October. And that's been consistent over the year, except for, I believe, only one month, we've been 3,000 below in that month, comparing it to 2017. About every other month, it's been exceeding last year's standard.
Okay, good. Nope, that's all about. All right. Standing committee reports. I have, and I meant to make a copy of this from Sam and Kira's Dunlap, about their sidewalk. They want to replace the sidewalk in front of RX. I'm gonna read it to you, because I did not make you a copy, I apologize. We, Sam and Kira's Dunlap, owners of RX Drugstore, located at 801 Broadway, would like to replace the sidewalks around our building. However, we will not be putting the bricks back in, or the museum's hitch post. We feel the hitch post should be alongside the museum, not the drugstore. The bricks are extremely slick in the winter. We get multiple complaints every winter about how slick they are, even when we salt them. They are uneven and a tripping hazard, especially to elderly people with walkers and cadence. We realize the sidewalks are city property, yet we are supposed to maintain them as business owners. We were also told that we are liable for accidents that may occur on those sidewalks. We are not willing to assume liability if we are forced to put the bricks back in. Sam has talked to Austin St. John twice about this in the past two years, and has yet to receive an answer as to whether this is okay. In conclusion, we are willing to pay for our portion of the new sidewalks with the addition of truncated domes, with the addition of truncated domes.
Those are 88.
Okay. Assume liability and continue to maintain them with mutual agreement of the removal of the bricks and the hitch post. If this is not satisfactory, would you please let the city know that they need to come and repair their sidewalks, and start maintaining them in the winter months? On the event that a customer would not get, would get injured on these sidewalks, we would let them know to contact city offices for assistance. Thank you for your time to just, take, thank you for this time in discussing this, we hope you will understand the reasoning, and the, please, please. Thank you for your time in discussing this, we hope you will understand the reasoning is in the best interest of the people in the community, and we look forward to working with you to replace the sidewalks. We have received two different estimates for the new sidewalks from Inland Construction and Big Blue Concrete for about $13,000. We'd like to replace the sidewalks first thing this spring, so those estimates will need to be revised at that time. Thank you, Sam and Kira's Dunlap.
Mayor, I noticed, I was just there this evening, the sidewalks are horrible, there's chunks like out of them, a number of places.
Especially on the north side, yeah, because of salt, it's gotten in the cracks and eaten. It's not good.
So I can understand why they don't want the hitching posts in front of their building, that we should move those down to front of the museum, that makes total sense. The brick, I think, just like the, the trees, I don't know how we can make people have brick anymore than we make them have trees.
I mean, I guess, did, did they go back with brick when the United re did theirs?
Yep.
See, we required it for consistency, everywhere else has it.
We required it from United Bank?
Yeah. I mean, I understand what they're saying.
Well, I think bricks are slick.
Yes, they are.
They are.
And they have a lot of elderly people coming to the RX drugstore, and they have a lot of elderly people that go into right beside them, the community health, it's a building. So I think as someone who owns commercial property and is willing to put in new sidewalks.
Let me ask this, Austin, maybe you know, are there any, I mean, are there like pedestrian appropriate bricks? Are there any kind, I mean, this kind of goes to the trunk, with truncated domes? Are there's any kind of brick that wouldn't be a slipping hazard, or just the nature of the beast, bricks are gonna be slippery?
I think, because we've dealt with multiple bricks, including, those are specially ordered bricks, because they're thinner and made for that.
Tile almost.
Yeah. They're probably gonna be slicker than the concrete. What we had kind of talked about when he came in, is reducing the amount of brick that's out there. He wasn't kind of, he wasn't really in favor of any brick, so my answer wasn't exactly.
I'm gonna be honest, the tone of the letter doesn't exactly excite me.
Well, the thing is, that, you know, we tell them that they have to maintain the sidewalks.
Yeah, I maintain ones in front of my house, you know, I mean, that's just the nature of being in town, welcome to city limits. I mean, you own, you pay taxes to the middle of the street, because you technically own it, and we have a right of way.
Okay, wait a second. We're just talking about economic development, maintaining properties on Broadway, and we have someone in an existing property that wants to put new sidewalks in.
What if they, what if we suggested they mimic what United Bank, maybe even go further, because United, I know RX doesn't want trees in front of them, so you take those tree spots, so you mimic that on that corner, take those tree spots and just make them concrete, but still have those smaller brick portions in there, to mimic what United Bank did.
How, how many sets do they have of brick?
They got some pretty big spots in front of them.
There's one with, with the Pony Express Granite Memorial in front, and there's one to the east of that.
Well, nobody's gonna walk in front of the Pony Express.
And there's four on the west side.
There's four on the west side? Well, the west side, I don't think is as important, the west side?
No, the search got five, there's five on the west side.
Well, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know why we would make somebody put in brick on the west side of Broadway.
Two, three, four, five.
That one's not so important, because everything, I don't think anybody else has brick on the west, on the side streets.
Well, United wanted to, though.
Yeah, okay.
But I think, I think we could, we could take out, we could agree to that. How many's on the front?
There's two on the front. There's the one with the marker in it, and there's one immediately to the east of that. And then there's one kind of between there and the place next door.
Okay, well, I think.
Yeah, there's one on the property.
How about if we counter and just ask them, we agree to take out the west, see if they'll consider leaving the ones on Broadway? You wanna talk, deal with this?
Yep.
Okay. Anyway, they wrote it to city council, gave it to me, so that's why I brought it to you.
So what are you gonna do if they don't, if they say no?
Well, then he's gonna bring it back to council and.
The monument is going back regardless, right?
Yeah, they, they like the monument there.
And they just put it, they just put a squirrel there. So I don't think that they're gonna move, I think they'll be okay with that brick by there, because nobody walks there, I don't think. Do they?
It's pretty tight right there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. So they probably wouldn't have a problem with that one, but we'll see.
Okay.
We'll, we'll see if we.
And the hitching posts were on Broadway.
Yeah. Okay, so we're, and they're not gonna put it until spring, so hopefully that'll work. See what they say. In the information packet, I talked about, and Darlene and Diane were there, about Matt McConnell and Associates, they, they say they weren't either asphalt.
We've tried them in the past, and it, it does not work as well as the stuff. Even, even if they come and fill it up, why, why are we putting it in our, in our potholes if, if they are, if they just have to continually come back? Gary says it flakes out, and does not last as long as the stuff we currently use.
Well, do they, does their warranty say they'll come back and replace it?
That's what you told me. You said he would personally come up.
I think he said that, didn't he?
I don't remember, but I know he said it was warranted, so.
Well, maybe we should talk to that about, with, at the budget meeting when Gary's here. Shall we do that? Have that discussion? And also, the other thing, that cooperative purchasing, how can we not do that?
Cooperative purchasing, as in?
For office supplies and, and water and sewer supplies, things like that? They said they can get them at better prices, why don't we do that?
We have our, we, over time, we develop our suppliers, and, and we have specific, not demands, but.
Some of these said there's no minimums. Anyway, have you looked into that?
But, yeah.
Yeah. And the last thing is that, on this sheet, it said Brownfields is coming in November. Are they coming in November?
I don't know.
You know anything about Brownfields coming in November?
I don't.
What's that?
Brownfield's coming, regard, so they said they're coming to Marysville in November. Nobody knows anything about it? Okay, well, that's most of that.
Well, we're on streets.
Yeah, we're on the streets.
I saw that, that, you know, on 12th Road, they brought some quote unquote rock.
Oh, man, they told me it was horrible, I said.
It's almost more dirt than rock. It looks like what you would remove when you're gonna bring in some rock.
It's Rockies, it comes from Rockies.
So I sent an email to Carol after we had that meeting, and she said it's terrible rock.
It's almost.
I haven't dirted out there since I got my email.
A lot of fines, a lot of fines.
They said it was awful.
It's the same place, same thing the county's using all over, though.
But is it the same rock that went on Jayhawk?
Yes.
Comes from the same place.
No, is it the same rock?
It's got more fines in it.
It was slime.
Yeah, it's, it's the fines, that's what makes it slimy.
Okay, well.
The slimes have to get wet in order to pack.
You're correct, but you gotta have a different proportion, and different proportions for different roads, and I don't think there's enough rock in it, and apparently people out there don't either.
So I think we should all drive out there, take a look at it, and talk about it again.
So, yeah, they have the same problem up here.
Because when we had our meeting with our township, they just told us, they just graded it, and they put rock down, so I figured them to say, hooray, and it was not a hooray.
This, this is Marysville Township, right?
Yes. Well, you know, I, I will say, from that meeting, they said that they have graded 12th Road 30 times this year, and the normal grading is twice a year for a county road. So they have put a lot of time in, into 12th, grading 12th Road.
It's got northern.
No county road's only grading twice.
Well, that's what they told me.
That's absolutely.
Didn't they say that?
Well, I happen to live, that's how I have to get home, and that is not true. That is a very untrue statement. That is not.
I heard it too.
I wrote it down.
Yeah.
That's a lie.
They laid 16th.
I went out there right after the meeting and compared to Jayhawk Road. It was smooth. What, what about that, where they, when they called you, were they upset about? They said it was what?
On Jayhawk?
It was slimy. No, not Jayhawk, on 12th. Because I drove out there and it was actually...
I thought it was Potholes 12th Road.
Not, it wasn't, there was just like a little bit of washboarding?
Well, the washboarding, I also address that because they said at the township meeting that it was caused by acceleration and braking.
But there was compared to Jayhawk Road, it was wonderful.
12th Road was better than Jayhawk Road?
When, right after the meeting, I went out there right after...
You went through both?
On 12th, and then I went down Jayhawk. And then, I know we, we have to get a base on Jayhawk Road. I know we have to do that because it was neglected for so long. But I went out to 12th and it was a lot easier driving than it was Jayhawk. So how long after our meeting did they call you?
This was on Thursday after the rain and the snow, and it was slime. They said they couldn't drive on it.
Oh, was it? Okay.
I went out there Tuesday, this last Tuesday.
I didn't drive on it. I wasn't going to drive on it and slide in the ditch.
No, no.
Well, Jayhawk was bad.
But Jayhawk Road, we went and drove on it. But that's because they got new rock and the rock hasn't worked into the, into the road, so...
Yeah. And they said that they're going to put more rock on there. They've got, they've got to build that base on there because the other, I guess, city administrator neglected to do what he needed to do there, allocations. So anyway...
Are you talking to Jayhawk or 12th?
Jayhawk, yeah. But I'm just saying, I went out, right after, right after the meeting, I went out there, Carla, and drove it.
And they had said they just put it down, right?
They had, and they had, yeah, worked it, Marty had done his, his work on it. At that moment in time, it was an ice road. It wasn't slippery. It wasn't, it wasn't bad. I mean, like I said, there's a little bit of washboarding where they turn the corner, but otherwise, I was like, wow.
But they might, they say they'll, they'll grade it, and then the next day, it's just because they don't slow down and drive, they don't grade it fast, they go too fast. But on Thursday after the rain, it was so slippery because they put that new gravel on, and it was so slippery, they couldn't even drive on it hardly.
I could say that.
No, but the grader off, operator also mentioned that the people out there do not slow down when he's grading, didn't he?
Well, I totally, I totally...
They speed by him, they don't slow down. It's a hard road to grade because it's constant traffic.
Well, I totally understand that, too. But you've got to have it so you can drive on it after it snowed. So, I understand.
You can go by just straight rock and put on it. It won't work in. I mean, that'll make them happy because they want rock. But rocks sitting on that road will just, once you hit it with the car tire, it's going to go ping and it's going to end up in the grader ditch. So why are you putting just straight rock on it?
And people do need to slow down. It's only a 30 mile an hour speed zone, and that's what, that's what, that's what it says.
And I have had people tell me, well, just chip seal it. I've had people tell me about North 8th Road, too, of interest in doing that, and I'm like, that's the, that's the spot, spot fix, but it's not a permanent solution.
8th Street.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, 8th Street.
I was like, no way.
No, we have that, too. But 8th Street, not 8th Road.
But it's a gravel road. You live in the country, you know, it's a gravel road.
See, but that's what they say, though, is it's not the country. It's that they live in the city, but they have a gravel road.
Well, it's a gravel road.
Okay, so we, we haven't made any progress.
Doesn't sound like it.
All right, we'll just move on to water and wastewater this time. It's been a long night.
Yes.
Water and wastewater, anybody got anything?
Well, we did have a committee meeting, and Austin's going to get some more information and some, about some more companies that do the...
Mapping, GIS mapping?
Mm-hmm.
Is that all you want to report?
That's all I have to report.
Okay. Cemetery Airport, or, I'm sorry, Parks and Rec, Kessler House, we put that into parks. We had a meeting and we're trying to get more information about a security camera. So we need to get more information from Todd Ackerman before we proceed. Chief Ackerman. Anybody else have Parks and Rec?
Um, I don't know if it falls under Parks and, Parks and Rec. I had some buddy who's asked me a couple of times now, and I just keep forgetting to bring it to council, about downtown benches, why we don't really have downtown benches.
We're waiting for this urban design study for 2019.
I have a plan, a little bit of mine.
They knew we worked on the tree. They thought that was nice. They liked that bike racks will eventually come, probably. But they just didn't know why we don't have any benches. And I said, I don't know. I don't know if we used to, and it was tough to maintain or it just never did.
Remember bench downs?
You know what? People probably don't want to remove snow around a bed.
Well, that's true, too. But, I mean, as we do try to encourage people to spend time down there, especially in, you know, evenings and weekends and things, that might be something we want to consider.
Yeah, at least somewhere.
Somewhere, at some point.
Strategically placed.
Strategic benches, yes.
Okay.
Actually, you could build them so you could remove them in the winter.
Yeah, that's true. That's not a bad idea. Because they're not going to be walking into them.
No, they're not going to be sitting there too much during the winter, so...
That's a thought. Okay, thanks. 2019.
Just put it out there.
Just putting it out there. Cemetery Airport, Police and Fire. I just have a quick thank you. I read the highlights. Sounds like the police came and addressed some elementary concerns, so thank you, fire police for doing that. Oh, and then we have ATV side by side golf carts.
Can I jump back before we jump into that, on Cemetery Airport? How often, or who goes and checks the lights, like runway lights, taxiway lights and things at the airport? Does Dale go check? I noticed we have a helipad light out. I didn't know, when we see that kind of thing, we need to report it to somebody, or, I, I thought they have a cycle. They probably would catch it, but I just noticed it last night, so...
Helipad. Thank you. Important stuff, since we just had two wrecks today.
Yeah, I was going to say, since they're using the helipad.
Okay, so on the last page, on page 78, it talked about the Police and Fire Committee meeting on the ATV side by sides and golf carts, and the recommendation was no, we should not allow them to be driven around on city streets.
But...
But if you should, these are the things to be considered. So how do you guys feel about that? They make a recommendation. It's council's decision, so I appreciate all the detail they gave.
Well, I would agree with their recommendation.
You mean which one? Not two or everything?
Right, yeah, not two.
I, you know, my opinion, this is the third time on this council and the fourth time on any council that this has come up, that I've, like, looked at it. I mean, I guess I vacillate a little bit on whether it's a good idea or bad idea. I kind of see how they put it, which is, kind of think it's dangerous, but if you're going to do it, this is the way to make it safe. You know, kind of like you tell your kids not to drive crazy, but you tell them to wear a seatbelt, too, sort of thing. I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to kind of, I'm interested to see what the council has to say. I've had more people for it by far than against it. I mean, I don't have anybody who is actively against it come talk to me at all.
I, I see it in other cities. When I drive around, I drive around and I see all these people and I'm like, okay, I get it, I get it.
If we do it, do you think, if we did follow their recommendations, do you think that would, I mean, first of all, I guess, is this something the police are comfortable, making sure these rules are followed? As far as the registration, does that go through the PD or does that go through City Hall?
It could go either way.
I'm always a little nervous of putting new things on employees.
I don't like the part with the golf cart in here. There's no safety in a golf cart.
There's no roll cage or roll bars.
There's no roll cage. It's all plastic.
Fiber glass and aluminum at best.
So that's your, so ATV inside by sides, you don't have a problem with the golf cart vehicle against?
ATVs I have. I don't want to see ATVs. They...
UTVs.
UTVs are fine. Sorry, yeah. The side by sides. Oh, there it is. Side by sides, mark or utility vehicles.
But you know, the little ATVs, you know, you get out and get going, and you know, you turn a corner real sharp and catch a brick here in Marysville. It's on its side. I mean, I don't care if they bring them in the wintertime to move snow and stuff, but I don't want to see them shooting up and down the streets and stuff.
This 18 only, now, there will definitely, I say this, I have a 17-year-old, there will definitely be cases where somebody's like, oh, he's 17, he'll be okay. The penalties for violation of this would have to be substantial, because if the penalties are a $20 ticket, then it would be a problem.
Couldn't you have, where if you caught a kid that was under 18 driving it, you pulled the registration for that vehicle and they...
Oh, yeah, you could. And the same as if you, one without registration, you could say it as a five, it's like the seatbelt thing, a $5 ticket the first time, and go register it, and you can make them register it within a window or whatever, you bust them a second time, then it's like a big fine. I, I really just, if you're going to do it, I think it has to have some big teeth. I know it's going to be, I don't want an unfunded mandate. Also, the registration fee, I think, would have to be enough to cover any costs associated with all that. So, and frankly, only people who are really serious about it are going to go and pay that registration fee. And you'd, I mean, it'd take a real public works, I mean, a public information thing, and you'd really have to warn people off of violating it. Because that's, I mean, a lot of the accidents you see, the summer adults, but they're usually somebody who's a younger, yeah, younger driver.
And that might be a deal.
And same with, and same with alcohol and everything else, which I presume operating it on city streets, if they're drinking, is a DUI thing.
Just like riding a bike.
Just like a bicycle horse or a lawnmower or whatever.
And you can't ride them down the highway.
Right.
Crossing only.
I never thought about the fact we could pull the registration as a...
But the thing is, if somebody gets hurt on these, is it worth for you running around on them with all the traffic and stuff we have? Do you want...
Well, the other thing is, how is it any different than a motorcycle? I mean, how is it...
Safer than a motorcycle, to be honest. Nothing protective.
I mean, or a bicycle. How, how's it...
But we just have more stuff, we just have more things on the highway than what we have now, so...
Mayor?
Or on the streets.
I was visiting with Mr. Lahaska last night, and I told him I had stopped at several small cities looking at something else, and they allow the side by sides. But there they are. Several of them parked in the front yard. There's one in the west-sided town parked right, right in front of the, of the house. One in my neighborhood. I just see, you know, where I've seen them, it's not attractive. They're just, you know, and in Blue Rapids, I believe I saw like three of them parked in the front yard.
Well, we could make it like we do vehicles. You know, you're not supposed to park your vehicles in your front yard. You're not supposed to have it up on blocks. We could add that on there.
The safety concern is really the big one. I think everybody can probably kind of agree. I, I think if we can make sure it's not an undue burden on staff and it can pay for itself, I'm not really worried about the people who go through the process because they're, you know, those are the people who are probably telling me they want it. It's the ones who will see that and go, oh, okay, now that must be allowed now, and they'll just go wild. And that's going to be the Looney Tune with no lights who tries to sprint across the highway when there's a truck barreling over, you know, the viaduct and, you know. The what-ifs are scary. Like I said, I think it'd have to be done really thoroughly and delicately before we proceed.
Well, and I have a question, too. Okay, so they want to leave Marysville to go drive where? On private property? Where?
They're legal on, they're legal on gravel roads.
They're legal on gravel roads?
In the county.
In the county.
In the county. And paved roads, I suppose, in the county as well. Non-state highways in the county, I believe they're legal. That's why you'll see farmers in them a lot, even sometimes going down the ditches along highways and things, which is typically not, not legal.
Yes, do that.
You see them. You see where farmers do it all the time, though. You can see the tracks.
And, and then I thought, my gosh, he could have come right up in front of me, like what happened to Mr. Rowland.
Right. That's, you know, there's that. There's, I believe there was a younger girl killed down by Corning. Was that last summer or summer before? There's cautionary tales.
But that was an ATV.
I thought it was a UTV. It was a UTV, I believe, but no seatbelts. And so I think she was ejected and that was part of it. And that's why you would have seatbelt. I mean, this, but again, it's, the rules are only as good as people follow them. So you'd have to, the police would have to be on board with watching for it and making sure.
Well, he, Todd, made it sound like they'd have not a problem, you know, and we would, basically like the inspection fee that would be donated to them because they'd be the one doing the inspecting of the vehicles.
Yeah, if they, yeah, if they register them, let's see, like, we have a, we have a bicycle registration program. I feel like not many people really know exists. But, yeah, we have a bicycle registration program. They administered out of the PD. Everything's registered in my garage. But if they, yeah, they rent like that, if it would cover their costs and it wasn't a thing, you know, they could turn it in to Ruth down there.
So, I mean, there's motorcycles. We ride a motorcycle. You guys ride a motorcycle. You know, I mean, if it's going to happen, somebody's going to always be foolish about it. It doesn't matter if you're driving a car, riding a bicycle, riding a motorcycle. Somebody's going to do something foolish. And it's, you know, it's like kids walking down, you know, you see three packs kid, three kids walking down the street and another three kids walking down the street. The one, three kids are going to somebody's house, that they're going to go try something.
And, I mean, the other thing you could do, I suppose, unless there's a legal reason you couldn't, is run some sort of pilot program. But that may not be, that may be a half measure that's not even worth considering. But I'm just putting it out there. There are, I, I imagine there's places, not necessarily this, but have done similar things where they said, well, we're going to allow X many the first year as a pilot and see how it goes.
That's a good idea.
And if people follow the rules, if nobody, if they don't be, if they're not catching people breaking the rules all over town, then they can expand the pilot moving forward. I'm just saying, if you want to try to find some middle ground, is an option.
Like a temporary discount.
Again, though, I, I know it's a half measure.
There's nothing stopping us if we tried it and we're having problems. Six months from now, we can say...
Yeah, I doubt that people are going to go out and buy a UTV to do this. I mean...
Right.
Doubtful.
Did they take the ATVs off?
Yeah.
We took the ATVs off.
Does it say, does it say here they have to have a driver's license?
They have to be 18.
They have to be 18.
Well, of course, they have to have a driver's license.
Well, no, but there's people who've had, like, their license revoked. I don't want them using an AND run.
Well, I would think that would be...
They need to have a license.
Didn't it say valid license?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I was going to read through.
I don't know set it specifically, but yes, they'd have to be a dog.
It was on there, too. Wasn't it?
No, you'd have to have insurance on it.
You have the insurance.
I mean, this, this is Washington's. I picked it up. There's nine pages here. Washington has nine pages.
See, what, what does Hanover have?
Nine pages of the ordinance?
I don't know what they've got, but they're not unfortunate.
That's what they give you when you register?
I picked, I picked, I was in Washington the other day, and I picked up theirs, and they have nine pages.
Criteria to have a, to, to get a license?
Rules and regulations.
But they've got ATV, golf cart.
Micro unit, micro utility truck.
They have ATVs and golf carts on there?
Yep.
As a definition.
Well, but they're smaller community than Marysville.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But that's, that's what, that's what your smaller towns have, so...
90% of their towns to the north.
Yeah.
But that's what most of the towns around here have. I just picked one up because this is what they had just for, just for information.
I wouldn't think riding a golf cart would beat you up, anyway, wouldn't it? They don't have much for suspension, do they?
On Brook Street.
Yeah, I'd think that it would be rough.
But, you know, you say motorcycles are safe. My brother ended up on the hood of a car of a motorcycle because some lady turned in front of him. So, you know, I mean, motorcycles aren't safe either.
And a lot of the reason motorcycles and bicycles get the leeway they do in the laws is because of history, because they predated the cars.
You know.
Oh, Mayor, who was on the committee and, and made the recommendation?
Diane and I and Todd Ackerman was with us.
And none of us, none of us recommended him. Todd wasn't even in favor.
We talked about it, and we just kind of ran it through the ideas, and this is what we came up with.
We just feel there's a lot, a lot of traffic in Marysville, especially about 3 o'clock We just feel there's a lot, a lot of traffic in Marysville, especially about 3 o'clock or 3:30, when Lendals and, and school lets out, it's a madhouse in town, with the stoplights, all the stoplights, and the motion lights and stuff in town, it's.
But the whole thing is, is they cannot be on, they cannot be traveling on the highway, they can skirt across.
Well, they can go across the highway, but that's still.
They can't be traveling down, yeah.
Well, do we wanna go ahead and make a motion whether to proceed this or not? Somebody wanna make a motion, and we'll vote it out, and see yes, no, and see if we need to draft up an ordinance or not?
I'll, I'll get it on the table, I'll make the motion to draft an ordinance, and to allow, let's see, UTVs, ATV, no, UTVs, side-by-sides, mini trucks, or micro trucks, to be allowed in city limits with the recommendations as provided for by the Police and Fire Committee.
Okay.
Are you doing it as a pilot program or not?
Uh, yeah, yes, I will say that as a pilot program.
For, when you say that, are you limiting the amount that can register?
Limiting, yes, I would say limited to, I don't know what everyone thinks, I'll say 10, in the, in the initial year with review.
What if we have more than 10, we gonna like stick them in a lottery?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that, do a lottery for the pilot program.
You're gonna have more than 10.
You're gonna have more than 10.
Well, okay, how many do you think we're gonna have?
Let's, let's start, let's start with 20.
If we don't know what the prices are.
Let's start with 20.
Okay.
Let's start with 20.
That's fine.
So, I'm just in there thinking, if you, so it's the first 20 that register?
I'd say we set a, well, I'd say we set a date and put them in as a lottery, you have to be entered in, if you're, register your interest.
Oh, I think those are gonna make people mad.
Do you?
I don't like that.
I'm more in favor of just trying it.
Yeah, I think too.
Okay, I'm in the middle of making a motion, I'll remove the pilot program language.
Okay, I was gonna say, I just think that is gonna cause more unhappy feelings, we don't want unhappy feelings.
So, I'm making a motion to move forward with drafting an ordinance, to allow, with the stipulations as provided for by the Police and Fire Committee, and their recommendation, with the exception of the golf carts, because otherwise, we. Or UTVs, they have no ATVs, but I'm just exempt, saying also no golf carts.
Do you want a pilot program in, in the sense that you reevaluate in a year?
Yeah, well, I, I think we should consider, yeah, I, I would say we should, I don't know, if we just draft the ordinance, do we need to have the ordinance that we evaluated every year? We don't, we can just revoke.
No, we just, we just evaluate.
We have that much of complaints, we'll be evaluating.
Yeah, we'll be evaluating it, yeah.
So, there, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, and we've had lots of discussion, so I think we can move on to the vote, if you guys are okay with that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I, I heard two no's, is that right, 6-2? Raise your hand if you were a yes. Okay, 6-2. Draft it up, go for it.
All right.
That was easy, right?
You're a child, you're a kid.
Just behave.
Yeah.
He's good at it.
Todd Ackerman, myself, was the one that made that list, uh, for the recommendation.
Oh, you and Todd?
Then he just said it to us.
I, I think I put in the motion that city council members, households can partake, right?
Okay, well, thank you for your input.
We do on ours.
And your perseverance to be here tonight. Okay, any other police and fire, any admin and finance? On appointments, did you get this, you didn't get this in the email? Okay, my appointments, I have for Kessler House Museum Advisory Board, for two-year terms, Rachel Frye, Sharon Kissinger, Michelle Weitzel, and Coleman Younger, all but Michelle are continuing on, and Annie Shane asked to get off, so Michelle Weitzel got on. Planning Commission, we have Marty Nordas, Shelby Temps, alternate Vicki Gross, and alternate Amy Patterson, those are for three-year terms. Zoning Board of Appeals, we have Vicki Gross, alternate Bob Connell, and Convention and Tourism, beginning in January, we have John Engler, Ally Argo, and Maureen Christ. Maureen and Ally are continuing on, Barb Kickaver is going off, and John Engler is going on.
And who is he?
He's the new video technician for Blue Valley, really nice guy, he's married to Dennis Croft's wife, daughter.
Dog.
Dennis Croft's daughter.
Which Croft?
Dennis.
Oh, I thought you said, yeah, I know, I, I didn't think that's what you said.
Okay.
Those are the mayor's recommendations.
Wait. No, I was trying to find somebody else, I'm leaving her as an alternate right now, yeah, so she's an alternate, but she's a, she's a, she's on the zoning board of appeals, and she's an alternate of the planning commission. Okay, did you accept as I proposed?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Present.
Your wife, no, you wouldn't.
Oh, okay, 7-0-1?
May we, may we have a copy of that?
Yeah, I, I sent it to her, but I sent it out late afternoon, so maybe you didn't check for emails.
I did not.
Did you, did you have a specific question? Most of those are renewals, other than Annie Shane's flapping with Michelle Weitzel, and John Engler taking over for Barb Kickaver. They'll be in, it'll be alternate.
I can make a copy for you, darling.
So, there's an executive session.
Okay, thank you for approving those, are we still having an executive session?
Yes, please.
Who, did you type up a motion?
I did, it's in my office.
For this acquisition, specifically?
Why don't you just go ahead and do these kinds of things?
Yes.
Yeah, if you have one, that's fine.
Well, I, uh.
It's the same.
Acquisition is six, did you write it up for six?
Well, it just says to use the same thing, and then say.
Use six to discuss. Okay, you guys, the exception.
Party's not over.
Do you wanna read this, Todd, or Diane? The first, it's property acquisition, it's number six.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Uh, move the city council recess into executive session pursuant to the property acquisition exception under KSA 75-4319B.
Six.
Six, to discuss property acquisition.
Yes.
This is the second session, include the mayor, city council, and city administrator of St. John, the session will begin at 10:35, and last.
10:50.
15, 15 minutes, to come back at 10:50.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Just speeding back to order?
You don't have to say anything.
No decisions, binding decisions are made, or back to regular session? Roundtable. I just wanna say thank you veterans for all of your service protecting our country, remembering our fallen wall, is that, the American Legion is very, is, is very nice, thankful for Post 163, and Commander Oldie for bringing it to our community, so you guys could all go visit that. Kevin, I'm sorry to see about your passing, of your father Willie Ormstrom, he was a past city council member, and is a really good man, so our community will miss him. And just last thought, is, I don't know how many of you guys watched or listened to the football game on Friday night, but talk about tenacity, you know, they battled to the very end, I was very proud, it taught them a lot about perseverance, and it was a great game, it didn't end how we wanted it to, but the Bulldogs fought hard, and with tenacity, but that being said, darling.
Uh, yes, and that, the wall of.
Remembering our fallen?
Is, is very nice, and.
It's Kansas, specifically, that have died since 9/11, and.
2001.
What did I say, 9/11?
Yep, 2001.